Public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings. Is there any public input this evening? Seeing none, we have a new public hearing, Three Hidden Way. Jeremy and Elizabeth Hasty requesting a special permit under section 195.8 nonconformity and/or 195.9b conformity for a 20% reduction in the side setback requirement to build a 13 by 26-foot three-inch addition for an office bedroom and a bathroom. Any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB district. Good evening.
Hello.
I could ask you a name and address for the record?
Yep, Elizabeth and Jeremy Hasty, Three Hidden Way.
Maybe you can walk us through what you have planned.
Yeah, so as you shared, we are requesting a special permit for a 20% reduction on our setback to add a second bathroom and fourth bedroom to our home on the north side of the property. I think in the packet we sent, we had some drawings that we had done. We've since gotten some builder drawings. Is that's helpful to take a peek at?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
So the first page is current, and then there's a couple of drawings of the addition. You'll see it's on the right side of our property, the north side, where our current bedrooms and bathroom are, so making for the most fiscally advantageous additions. And then I think on page four, you can see the, what the front facade, and then the next page is the side of the house will look like. We have discussed with our abutters, most importantly, those who live on Dalton Way, who their line is directly, there's the one where the setback is, and they're all in support of our plan. Yep.
The extension of the house is still going to be the same.
Yep, mm-hmm. Yeah, that's just where the bathroom versus closet go in the primary.
So you want the closet and he wants the...
Then we are both, just which configuration?
Probably don't need to weigh in.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the board at this time? I'm going to read in the letters. We have a letter from the Department of Public Works. Dear members, this officer reviewed the project application plans, documents submitted to the DPW on August 29th, '23 for the following public hearing, Three Hidden Way. As a result of this review, this officer has the following comments. Erosion control devices must retain all sediment on site. These must be installed prior to work or demolition. The road must be kept free of dirt and swept regularly. If you have any questions, please contact the office. Sheila Joyce, project engineer. I have a letter from the Chelmsford Fire Department Fire Prevention Office regarding Three Hidden Way. Dear members of the board, this officer reviewed the proposal for an addition at Three Hidden Way and finds the following. The entire home and existing new construction shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by 780 CMR 51, standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. The applicant shall upload a plan showing all life safety devices to their building permit application. This officer has no objection to the proposed reduction in the side setback. This officer would approve of this addition with these conditions and asks that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Danielle Kostopoulos, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from the Building Department. The following public hearing with notice proposed, the project application plans and documents are being submitted for review.
That's just our regular memo that I send out. It's the determination.
Oh, there's all that. I do not have. Just the denial, correct?
The determination. It's just the determination letter itself.
Dear Mr. Hasty, this notice in denial to your proposed addition at your home, you would need side yard relief from the Board of Appeals. Please make an application to the Community Development Department within 30 days of receiving this letter. Thank you, Jose Nigron. I have a letter from the Police Department regarding Three Hidden Way with no comments. I have a letter from the Board of Health regarding Three Hidden Way with no comments. Those are the extent of the letters. The board has no further questions. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Now is the time. Seeing none?
No one like to talk. I'd like to close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. You guys can sit down. We're going to debate right now.
Pretty straightforward with the special permit.
I agree. I think there's no concerns. Sounds like a motion.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 195-9 conformity for a 20% reduction on the office bedroom bathroom for Three Hidden Way.
Second. Second by Peter. All in favor?
Yes.
Is he unanimous?
Thank you very much.
We'll try to move right through this. We have quite a few applications. We are going to have a hard stop at 9:30 this evening, so hopefully everyone can be heard tonight. Our second application is 100 Park Road. Lauren Halloran is the trustee requesting a special permit under section 195.6.1 for the construction of an addition for a limited accessory apartment and any other relief deemed necessary. This property consists of approximately 2.07 acres as located in the residential RB district. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Lauren, 27 Merrimack Way in Tingsborough. This is my dad Jim, who currently lives at the property. And we're just looking to add an accessory apartment for him there, and he'll be moving into that part.
Terrific. Like to walk us through, maybe we can look at the plot plan and see what we visualize.
So currently, there's a ranch on the property, and we're looking, it's going to be 726 square feet attached by mudroom, a common mudroom. So you'll enter the mudroom and go left towards the existing property or take a right into the new apartment.
Okay.
Do you want to read the narrative into the letter? She submitted a narrative.
We can maybe absorb it for a minute and see if there are any questions in the letters. Are there any questions on the board at this time? I'm just trying to find the front of the plan to see if there are two doors in the front. Is that, is it going to be a single door entry?
Yes.
Yes. So there's a door to the main branch, and then the door to the common area, and then there's also a door in the back going out to the deck as another way of exit?
Yeah.
Second, either.
Existing deck.
It's on page one of the architectural plans. I'll pull that up for you.
Everybody could get a peek. So it's a side entrance there, yep. Everybody good? The letters would be appropriate. The following letters have been submitted. This is from the Engineering Department regarding 100 Park Road. Lauren Halloran, trustee, requesting a special permit under section 195.6.1 as a result of this review, the officer has the following comments. Erosion controls should be installed slope down and must retain the sediment on site. They must be installed, these must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The road must be kept free of dirt and swept regularly. Sincerely, Sheila Joyce, project engineer. I have a letter from the Chelmsford Fire Department and Prevention Office regarding 100 Park Road. Dear members of the board, this officer reviewed the proposed limited accessory apartment at 100 Park Road and finds the following. The entire home shall be upgraded to comply with the latest addition of the Massachusetts State Building Code for smoke, heat, and carbon monoxide detectors. The proponents shall submit plans for review to the Fire Department office via the Town of Chelmsford online permitting portal. All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors required shall be marked on the plans prior to submission for review. This department is concerned that as more than one dwelling on a property, that occupancy should be identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as 100 Park Road and 100A Park Road. Both addresses must be visible on the building from the street. The applicant shall make application for addresses to the Chelmsford E 911 Committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Drewes. This department is not interested in official change of address being recorded on the deed. It is only our intent to distinguish this home to emergency responders. This office would approve of this plan with these conditions, and I ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Danielle Kostopoulos, Chelmsford, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from the Building Department.
The determination letter, which was posted on the agenda, right here.
We could probably leave these out of the meeting ones for the future.
Mm-hmm. Just the determination.
Dear Ms. Halloran, please use this notice to apply for a special permit for your proposed LAA addition. I encourage you to apply for a special permit within 30 days of receiving this notice with the Town of Chelmsford Board of Appeals. I look forward to assisting you during this process. Respectfully, Jose Nigron. I have a letter from the Police regarding 100 Park Road with no comments. I have a letter from the Board of Health for 100 Park Road with no comments. It's Three Hidden Way. Any further questions?
I just have one comment. I really like the way that this apartment is set up. I mean, because you have plenty of room, it seems like it's going to work perfectly. That's my only comment, Brian.
That's a good comment. I'll open this up to the public at this point. So anyone would like to comment in favor or opposition to this application, now is the time. Seeing none?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Nancy. Again, all in favor?
Yes. I'd like to also make a motion to approve the limited access apartment for 100 Park Road with consideration of the letters being written into...
In the record.
Our notice.
Second by Peter.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Since Town Council C I P should be directed to him, in this case, is the trustee considered the homeowner, the actual homeowner? Because I think the LAA for Chelmsford says that the owner has to live in the main unit. They can't live in the accessory unit.
I would certainly consider the trustee to be the owner in this instance, yes.
But I'm not sure that's accurate.
Because I thought the pet on the...
I believe the owner of the property is required to live there, but not in either unit. So I could own it and let my child live there, or I could own it and live in the main house and let my mother live in the other unit. I don't think there's, I could be wrong, but I don't think there's any confusion there.
The way the bylaws written, the owner lives in the main house, but in this case, ownership is listed as the trust.
It's Jane's re-trust, and I'm the trustee of it.
I'm good either way, but I didn't, I didn't understand that to be the case. I think that we haven't noticed that before. I'll do a little research here.
Does the answer matter? If it's a, if it's a trust anyway, does the...
Right, in this case, it doesn't matter. I'd just like to know if we're going to, that's, just seems so, doesn't seem right.
I never thought of that.
I'm not a lawyer, as Kavanaugh is, of course, but my understanding is that a trust is the owner of whatever document the trust is greeted with.
Right, in this case, she's certainly the owner as a trust. I just was unaware that the requirement was the owner had to live in, and I'm going to say quote, it would be, in this case, 100 Park Road and not 100A Park Road. But I don't think we've ever enforced that. I wasn't even aware of it. What Vicki's referring to, it says, "application eligibility," and the LAA is located within and as existing as of the date of application, owner occupied, single-family property located within any zoning district. But that would not require the owner to maintain residence in the main home. Say I'm going to retire and give the house to the kids. I can do this, build the addition, move into the addition, and the children can move in the house. Or I could build it and then let my mother move into the house. Either would be appropriate.
Stating that it has to be occupied doesn't refer to the original house.
He's currently occupying it, right? Yes, he lives there now.
Again, I don't, I don't think that...
I wouldn't interpret that way.
Do you understand it, Paul, whether I'm just confused here?
Yeah, no, I would not interpret this as requiring the record owner to live in the main portion. I think they can live in either the main portion. We did this in North Chelmsford Park.
The owner must apply, but it doesn't say the owner has to be limited to where he would live in the future, other than on property.
Correct.
Or there'd have to be a transaction.
I don't see why the town would have any interest in requiring the owner to live in the main portion.
I just want to be clear, so you don't confuse me.
Well, the land use restriction form.
It does say, "the owner shall occupy the principal dwelling."
Where does it say that?
The land use restriction form.
Limited accessory apartment use restrictions.
So we may need to update that form.
It would have to be the owner to apply. You'd have to, you'd have to live on the property, but you wouldn't have to maintain...
You would certainly have to be the owner to put on the restriction.
Right, right, to create it. We should word that right, I don't know.
Number five, number five says, "the LAA shall not be rented to occupied by persons who do not qualify as extended family members."
Correct.
So let's say she doesn't want to live there anymore.
Then the LAA is no longer legal. Or another family member.
But the family member can't move into the main house. Or not. That's the conundrum here.
I think the intent is just so it doesn't get rented out as like an apartment, and it stays within the family, so it doesn't matter who occupies which portion.
I think it's kind of vague.
I agree.
And we talked about these rules, the rules on LAA seem to be...
Session to tighten that up, but...
Seem to be...
I think we have granted in many generational directions with this, without regard for that, but it's saying that it's in there. We should figure out how to word it so it meets our needs, but, I mean, the eventuality is that someone is going to pass, and then typically, ownership would transfer to the younger party, but that's, you know, in most cases, not all, of course.
Well, if, if it doesn't matter who lives in the LAA, the original owner or the relative, and the original, the owner decides that they want to live in the LAA because it's tailored to their needs, and the person who they designated who's living in the main unit, who's a relative, decides they don't want to live there anymore, what are then the rights of the original owner, who's now living in the LAA, not the main house?
I don't know.
Well, that's just one of the conundrums that we need to tidy up.
We could have a session and try to tighten that up. Maybe Paul can review them and come up with some suggestions that clarifies it. I mean, right now is probably not the best time to go through.
Jose just pointed out to me in subsection E1, it says that, "notice the existence of the LAA is predicated upon occupancy by the owner or the owner's extended family to whom the permit has been issued." So it can be the property owner or their extended family.
So we have two different directions there that we should clarify.
So we need to tighten up the form itself.
The form should be corrected. Is that, is that easy enough to do, or is that something you would review, or, not town meeting? I don't think we need to...
No, it's not town meeting. I mean, I can certainly review it.
Print it out and be done.
I hope we're not going to keep these nice people waiting. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, we got off track here for sure, and we're trying to avoid that, so we failed. Don't sound like a motion.
It was a motion.
I think it, I think it went through, and he seconded.
I seconded.
You seconded, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. So we're good? Okay.
After a brief delay.
Okay, our third application is Two Pendleton Road, George and Denise Paquin. I hope I got that right. Paquin, requesting a special permit under 195.6.1 for the construction of an addition for a limited accessory apartment and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB district. Good evening.
Hi.
I got your name and address for the record.
My name's George. I'm here representing my wife Denise, who's the property owner. We have a not-so-typical family situation. My, my wife's sister, who's nine years younger, married my wife's brother. They met at our wedding. I'm sorry.
Your brother.
My brother. So, it must be nervous.
You do want to get that right.
Anyway, so it's made the holidays a lot easier.
Right.
But as we've aged, we've decided that we're going to consolidate households. And so we want to add two bedrooms to our existing house, and in the process, I get a two-car garage underneath, which we're really happy about. But we decided that they should have their own separate kitchen, just to be able to have a little bit of isolation from us, and that makes it into an apartment, in your view. So we're here requesting a limited accessory apartment. It's just that simple. We've, we've had a plot plan done up because the house is old enough so that it didn't, it didn't have an ASBilt as it require, and it looks like we've got all the clearances we need for abutters. And so it's really just a matter of, can we do an apartment or not, a limited accessory apartment? Excellent.
And the application to come with the letter signed by Denise.
So he's the owner?
Property owner.
Six by...
Let's see, the plot plan also has a floor area ratio and percentage of coverage, which wasn't an issue.
Okay, and the, I'm coming up with 780, but is there a common area?
Hold on just a second. I'll pull it up for you. Let's see, room calculations. I'll hand that out in paper of copy for you as well, so it's easier to read.
Measurement question, when you, do the floor area measurements be...
I literally took the foundation size and multiplied it out and came up with 780.
What they're doing here, it looks like they're taking the interior wall sizes to get to whatever they got to.
There is a staircase that's...
Right, the staircase alone is 120, the bedroom is, I don't know what the stair is, but we're talking 30 feet. I don't think the stair is less than 30 feet. Three foot six by 14'4". That's 50.4 feet removed from the 780, should be 730. I'm making 729.6 feet. We have 750 as a requirement for it, so we're just checking.
Yeah, we think that if you start with 780 and just remove some of the access and it looks like a bathroom.
Yep, that's exactly correct.
We're well under the 750.
Any questions from the board?
No, is it still, you still can just have two people in the, in the apartment, right?
Yeah, you can have two people in there.
Maximum two.
So how can you have two bedrooms?
We don't need to know that.
Older people score, simply.
I just wondered, okay, it's fine.
Those, whatever, catties make a lot of noise.
I think it's a good idea.
I think we're getting off course.
Crack that from the record.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're welcome.
I have a letter from the town engineer regarding Two Pendleton Road. This office has reviewed the project application and documents submitted to the DTW DPW on August 29th, 23 for the following public hearing. The proposed addition is over the existing sewer service. Applicant must contact the DPW Sewer Division to coordinate any necessary permits or actions to preserve or alter the sewer service. Two, erosion controls should be installed on the downslope and must remain, retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The road must be kept free of dirt and swept regularly. Three, there's a drain easement on site. No work shall interfere with the drain line. No permanent structure should be installed with a drain line easement. No work is currently being proposed on the drainage easement according to submittals. This comment serves as a reminder in writing. Sincerely, Sheila Joyce, Project Engineer. A letter from the Fire Department. Fire Prevention Office. Proposed limited accessory at Two Pendleton Road. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposed limited accessory apartment at Two Pendleton Road and finds the following. Entire home shall be upgraded to comply with the latest addition of the Massachusetts State Building Code for smoke, heat, and carbon monoxide detectors. The proponents shall submit plans for review to the Fire Prevention Office via the Town of Chelmsford online permitting portal. All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors required shall be marked on the plans prior to submission for review. This department is concerned that if there's more than one dwelling on the property, then that occupancy should be identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as Two Pendleton Road and Two A Pendleton Road. Both addresses must be visible on the building to the street. The applicant shall make an application for addresses to the Chelmsford E911 Committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Drewes. This department is not interested in official change of address being recorded on the deed. Is only our intent to distinguish this home to emergency responders. This office would approve of this plan with these conditions. And I ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Danielle Castoffice, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from the Chelmsford Police regarding Two Pendleton Road with no comments. I have a letter from the Board of Health for Two Pendleton Road with no comments. And that's it. Further questions from the board this time? Seeing none, I'm going to open this up to public comment. So when the audience would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application, now is the time. Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for Two Pendleton Road.
Second?
Second.
Any further comments, thoughts, motions?
Go for it, Charlie.
Oh, okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the limited access apartment for Two Pendleton Road with all the letters written into the record.
I'll second.
Second, Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Well, thank, thank you. We appreciate your efforts.
Oh, we didn't vote on the second one. We voted. Moving right along, our next application is 63 Carlisle Street. Sean and Francesca O'Donnell requesting a special permit under section 195 6.1 for the construction of addition for a limited accessory apartment. Who would have guessed? Any other relief deemed necessary. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Francesca O'Donnell and this is Sean. We're at 63 Carlisle Street. I'm looking to build an accessory apartment for my mom. She's getting older. Don't want her in nursing home. I'm a nurse, I only work three days a week, so I can be there to take care of her when she needs it and.
Good daughter.
Well, my, I owe my mom a lot.
Good daughter.
Good that you know that.
I literally think her every day. For making sure to come over here to this country in the seventies and making sure, you know, she built a better life for me and my sister. And, you know, my husband.
Good for you to appreciate that, it really is. Maybe get that a little bigger for some old people.
Oops, sorry, wrong button.
Is this one, dimensional relief needed?
That property line is quite a dogleg, isn't it? I drive by your, your house probably three or four times every single day and I didn't even know you were back there.
That's what a lot of people say. When I sell something on not Facebook Marketplace or something, they all say the same thing.
Nice stone fence along the road.
That's not mine, that's, that's the neighbors'. I guess too many people missed the turn over the years and ended up in his yacht, so he put that wall there.
Actually, I remember seeing that wall stolen a few times.
Yes, I'm just sorry.
Are there any questions from the board regarding this application?
Did you do your, did your math already, Brian?
Sorry?
Do your math already? What does it come up to?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't. I haven't even seen the. That one's already noted.
At the bottom, it states the new living area is 743 square feet at the bottom there, but.
Yep, new living area, this floor is 743 square feet. Just perfect. Even with that, there is a dual stairway, so pretty substantial switchback stair. They are well within the need.
What's the provision for the parking that you have? How many ex, how many extra cars are you expecting for this?
Just one.
And we're adding the one-car garage bay for all that.
That's all that.
She'll be really happy.
But if she had company, this, this room first.
Well, it's the same company we already have.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, tight family, so it's the same, same family members that are always over our house. The same ones that go visit her. Now it's just.
She could get a boyfriend.
Oh, I don't think so.
Where are we going with this?
So fine, we have departmental.
Does the switchback stairway on the extreme right, does that get you to the basement? And then you walk through the basement to get to the new garage? Is that how you get there?
No, the new garage, there's currently a window on my old garage. That window's coming out and there's just going to be an open doorway. We're not going to put a door. So the, the three garage bays are going to be connected that way. And then through her unit, her one-car garage bay will have access to her unit.
Through your garage?
Through her garage, because we're adding a third car garage bay.
Right.
Right now, we only have two-car garage.
Right, but to get to her garage?
Yep.
You have to go through your garage?
No, she can go through her unit.
She, she can do both.
She can do both. This is the new bay right here.
Is there a stairway there?
No, it's a, oh, I'm trying to keep everything one level far. The only stair she's going to have is to go from the garage into her unit is one step. And that's for water, so you know, no water is still from the car isn't going to creep into the house.
Yes, true. Further questions from the board? Looking right in left. I'm going to read the letters in. Chelmsford Fire Department and Fire Prevention Office sent a letter regarding 63 Carlisle Street. The office has reviewed the proposed limited accessory apartment at 63 Carlisle Street and finds the following. Entire home shall be upgraded to comply with the latest addition of the Massachusetts State Building Code for smoke, heat, and carbon monoxide detectors. The proponents shall submit plans for review to the Fire Prevention Office via the Town Chelmsford online permitting portal. All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors required shall be marked on the plans prior to submission for review. This department is concerned that if there is more than one dwelling on a property, then that occupancy should be identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as 63 Carlisle Street and 63A Carlisle Street. Both addresses must be visible on the building to the street. The applicant shall make an application for addresses to the Chelmsford E911 Committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Drewes. This department is not interested in any official change of address being recorded on the deed. Is only our intent to distinguish this home to emergency responders. This office would approve of this plan with these conditions. And will ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Danielle Castoffice, Chelmsford Fire Department, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from engineering regarding 63 Carlisle Street. The proposed addition will be near or possibly over the existing sewer service. The applicant must contact the DPW Sewer Division to coordinate any necessary actions to preserve or alter the sewer service. Two, erosion controls should be installed downslope and must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The road must be kept free of dirt and swept regularly. Sincerely, Sheila Joyce, Project Engineer. I have a letter regarding 63 Carlisle Street from the police with no comments. I have a letter from the Board of Health for 63 Carlisle, Carlisle Street with no comments. That is the extent of my letters.
We didn't receive one letter from the butter for the comment.
I have a letter from the butter. Michael Matthews and Heather Matthews at Six Shed Lane. Dear Chairman Reedy, we are writing in response to the request for a special permit under section 195 6.1 for the construction of an addition for a limited accessory apartment for 63 Carlisle Street. Sean and Francesca O'Donnell, due to previous planned travel, will be unable to attend the hearing scheduled for September 7th, 2023. We have no objections to the construction of an in-law apartment at the address and understand the need for such accommodations for aging family members. We are, however, concerned about the potential for excess runoff earth material during the construction process. During construction of the primary residence at 63 Carlisle Street, significant encroachment occurred on our property of fill and loom during heavy rainfall events. This summer, we have experienced flooding in our yard during and after the heavy rain events of water flowing through the 63 Street, 63 Carlisle Street property. At this time, the slope of the land and the property of the proposed construction and drainage system in place on our property has sufficiently handled the water in a way that protects our property and our other butters. However, the location of the proposed construction is in close proximity to the site where the water enters our property from 63 Carlisle Street. Respectfully request that restrictions be placed on the special permit requiring the appropriate mitigation strategies for the containment of all earth material from entering our property at Six Shed Lane during the construction process. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Michael and Heather Matthews. Will you talk with Michael and Heather about this?
I have not. I share a lot of those concerns. But the drainage issues, in my opinion, are caused by him. He keeps changing the geography of the land, filling it in with loom and grass clippings since I've lived there for the last 11 years. I have pictures of it, I'll show you how.
He's on his property?
Yep, he's on his property, but there's a town drain, or that may not be the best. There's some sort of drain in his yard and it runs out across Shed Road onto the other side of Shed Road. And when it rains, the water does collect there sometimes and that drain is supposed to be free to take all that water. Fortunately, he keeps changing the grade of the land, so now it's restricting the water flowing off my property and it's backing up sometimes on mine. If he didn't change the land and left the drain alone, we wouldn't have any water concerns back there. And I actually took some pictures as of just before noon time today showing this area. Is it okay to come up to you?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I, I'm going to defer to Jose and ask, I, we don't want to put something in the application, but could you review this before permit or talk with Sheila at engineering about how that would?
So that's my yard, that's the lower area of my yard.
So anything coming in heads, heads down in this direction?
Yeah, the reason I did this is this is going to be my new vegetable garden, because I'm losing my vegetable garden due to.
Your mother-in-law, yeah.
So this is his property and we can start to see some grass and he keeps building up this area. If you left well enough alone, the drain's over here, but he keeps building up over here. So now the water is really starting to pool and not flow to the drain. And here's a clearer picture of the grass clippings. And anybody's free to come out on my property.
So he's raising that grade up and.
Yeah, he keeps filling it in and filling it in. Him and his sons are always doing something back there. And it keeps changing the grade and that, that's fine. I've never had any concerns with it. But now he's making it sound like the water issues are going to be coming from me. It's like, no, no problem. The water issues, if you just left the grade, because it's a low spot of three or four properties that come together.
Yeah, yeah.
Then the drains had to take the water away, but now he's kind of like making it not flow properly.
I would suggest a friendly approach and talk with your neighbor and maybe ask Sheila at the engineering to come out and just talk about how this can work as it should. I mean, if it did work.
I'm not having any issues with my property, so I, I am going to create.
We're not going to put anything in the approval to do it.
But I don't know why he wants, because I need to, I, I understand the poor guy had some issues back in '08, but I ain't buy the house until 2012. So what issues he had with the builder isn't on me.
No, no, no.
And I get his concerns, but he's still concerned about the drainage, but yet he's blocking the drain. So it's hard to take him serious when he keeps filling in this land on how concerned he is with the drainage.
Whose drain is it? Is it the town?
I think, I don't know. It's on, it's on his property and I believe the town once came out and did clear it, like it backed up.
Okay.
I do think it's the town, but I haven't, I don't remember why I think that.
I mean, I require to mitigate water that leaves your property regardless of where it comes from.
Like they walk the silt. I have no problem doing that.
Are you involved with conservation in this project as well? Are you involved with conservation?
Um, how so? I don't know.
No, he's outside the buffer zone, he's not in their now jurisdiction.
But I, I would suggest you look at where you're going to be excavating earth and.
We're not even going to be over in that, it, it kind of comes, it's that section of the property, but I'm not going into that crushed stone area.
Right, right.
So I don't see why there's any need for any special, anything normal that these other people got approved tonight.
We've had, as you know, a summer of unbelievably aggressive rain. So I would suggest that you talk with the engineering about how to make that drain work right, but also.
I don't have any problems with my property. That drains his problem as far as I'm concerned and the water sits on his property most of the time. I just don't know why he thinks, and I need to have some sort of special.
Silt fence or hay bales?
What would all these other people have to do tonight that got approved? I think is adequate for me as well. I don't think there should be any added silt fence.
I'm not sure where I stand on this. I, I defer to Paul to, I mean, can we require a silt fence to? Should we? I don't know.
That's two different questions. You can. That's certainly a condition within this board's jurisdiction to impose. I don't know that it's been established that it is necessary.
I agree, I agree. I mean, would it be better to let Jose determine whether the site requires any? I, I don't know, we're failing.
It's a matter of having the applicant reach out to DPW and Conservation and take it from there. Because I, I don't know what's, I don't know what's really.
So they'll both review the plan as well?
Yeah, when, if the applicant is approved, then I'm going to send signed off to them anyways and I'll make, I'll make a note of it. And then they can take it from there, but at this time, I think the best thing to do is to have them go through the process of, you know, talking to the particular department and take it from there.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll, we're going to decide as we decide with or without the concern of the erosion, but I think putting in literally a hundred dollars worth of silt fence might well be worth your effort.
All right, if that's what it takes, I mean, that I'm willing to.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to put it in. I mean, I'm not gonna put it in as a condition. I'm gonna let Conservation and Engineering look at it, but I would think that...
Well, he doesn't have to go to Conservation, does he?
No.
No.
But they're gonna review the plan.
Right, but there's no Conservation issue on that lot, right, Becky? Is that what you're standing?
He's outside their jurisdiction.
They're still gonna sign off on the plan.
He'll sign off. He'll look at the map and see that it's well outside the buffer zone because the neighbor's front yard is in the buffer zone, the same neighbor.
Right.
And so David would sign off on it, looking at it on the screen, seeing that it doesn't fall within his jurisdiction.
But Engineering will look at it.
Engineering, yeah.
If there's a drain there, they can clear it.
And they've expressed concern about erosion to the road.
Right, bill of boilerplate, but yeah. I mean, it seems like everything's going the other way. I mean, a silt fence is relatively inexpensive. It might be a good neighbor policy for you, and I'm not gonna require it. All right. This time, I'm gonna open up to the audience if there are questions or concerns. Now is the time. Yeah, could relinquish the podium, please?
Good evening, board members. My name's William Harvey, and I own a rental property at 61-63 Carlisle Street that abuts... Did I say 61-63? 59-61 Carlisle Street that abuts the applicant's property. So you obviously didn't get a letter from the East Chelmsford Water District, which you should have. So there were serious problems regarding this property that have been recently, I became aware of. I had to have a survey done of this property. Wasn't my doing, but I had to have it done because, just to protect my property rights and to see exactly what I owned and what somebody else said that they owned. So I had a property survey done, and it revealed that I own a significant part of 63 Carlisle Street's driveway, as well as another parcel of land that 63 Carlisle Street thought they owned. That survey was done either sometime in July or August by Brian Melissi. I haven't received a copy of it yet, most likely because I haven't paid the invoice. So I should have a copy shortly. But the issue that's arisen is, number one, with the survey that was done, it's revealed that the water valve from the Carlisle Street onto, actually, it's encroached on my property, is a water valve that provides water to 63 Carlisle Street, and that water line is on my property. Those are very big issues that need to be resolved prior to any decision. Similar to when I applied for a permit, I guess, last month, is there was an issue with water service that the Water Department brought up, and this board found that it was compelling enough that we had to continue the hearing in order to get more information. But this certainly is, it's a serious issue. It also involves Conservation with Mr. Kuntz, who I've had several conversations with. This will, this is an issue that's gonna have to go before Conservation. This is an issue that involves the East Chelmsford Water District that I've sent several letters to, and they haven't had a response. So as I said, it's a serious issue. The length of the driveway going in on the right-hand side, you know, I own, which I didn't think I owned, and there is a, like I said, there's a water line that's on my property. That water line will have to be removed. And while the water line, there'd be significant engineering plans in order to remove the water line because it's within the wetlands that were delineated by some company that came onto my property without my knowledge or consent that I'll deal with on another date. So I found that quite shocking, that a neighbor would hire a wetland scientist to go onto property of another. So there are issues with Conservation. There's issues with encroachments. There's issues with removing the water line, and a significant, there's significant engineering that will be involved. And furthermore, while doing this, there's going to be some serious issues with regards to overflow of water. Because on that parcel of the driveway, there's a significant pool of water that goes under the driveway and goes onto my property. So if that's opened, that will cause problems with one of the neighbors, well, my property and as well as one of the neighbors on the other street.
I apologize, I misspoke when I said it wasn't within Concom jurisdiction. I'm noticing now the plot plan does, doesn't have distinctly delineated, but it states isolated vegetated wetland, which I believe is what the wetland on your property you're referring to that I see on here. It's very light, so here's the driveway.
Right. Yes, it does leave the property here.
Right, yeah. Oh, I see, yeah, the driveway line, yeah. I did forward the application for departmental review. I included East Water District, but I haven't heard back from them.
And they haven't responded to my letters also about this issue. However, somebody from the department did meet me at the property with my contractor. And essentially, I don't know what exists or what goes on in these Chelmsford Water Department.
You couldn't get one of them to come with you tonight to help out?
The East Chelmsford Water District?
Yeah.
Oh, they don't even return calls.
I never had a problem with them, but that's me.
Yeah, they don't return calls, and they don't return letters.
What we have right there is a certified plot plan from Allen &amp; Major, but...
It does show the driveway leaving the property.
And you're saying you have a certified plot plan from, what was it, Reese, you said?
Brian Melissi.
Brian Melissi. Melissi, I'm sorry.
Comes before this board.
And he has a different plot plan than this one for your property?
Well, I haven't looked at this one, but he has it all marked out. I had my whole property marked out with stakes, staked out the, his, what I thought was his driveway, but he staked the driveway out.
And you don't have an overlay for this yet?
We're concerning ourselves with this plot plan, and it does show the driveway leaving its property.
Yes.
I just don't know if this affects our decision at all.
Well, we effectively have your word for it.
Not at the moment, but we'll let you speak again.
Right, you're saying I had a survey done, and it says this and this, but I have no proof.
Excuse me?
Let me...
Drive by the property, and you'll see that a certified land survey was at the property that put stakes in. This isn't something that I went to Home Depot and bought stakes and decided to put them on my property. I'm an attorney, and I don't lie to board members. So if you're insinuating that...
Not insinuating anything.
Well, it certainly sounds that way.
I'm saying that you have come up at the last minute and said that there's a difficulty...
No, I haven't come up at the last minute. Tonight is the first meeting. Was there any previous meetings? No, there wasn't.
No.
This is the minute to be talking, okay? This is the minute. This isn't, we haven't had previous hearings. So there's problems here. And there was problems with my property that I live at, where the Water Department sent a letter and said there was some issues, and my meeting was continued because of those issues. So it must be important if we get water issues here, especially when you have a water line that encroaches onto my property. That's what I'm bringing up.
Fair enough.
You're right to bring it up.
Yes, you do, absolutely.
Can I jump in?
I wish you would, yes.
So this ultimately is a property dispute in terms of boundary lines, right? This board has no jurisdiction of any kind to make any sort of binding determination regarding property rights. That is exclusively within a court of competent jurisdiction, either the Land Court or the Superior Court. All you can do is review and decide on the application that's in front of you tonight. I would certainly caution the applicant before they move forward and spend significant amounts of money that they wanna make sure that they get this property dispute resolved because theoretically, if it's resolved against them, whatever improvements that they make, you know, would have to be taken down. So you certainly want to be very careful in what you do. That being said, you don't really have the right to tell this particular applicant that they can't get the special permit they're requesting because there's been a claim that the property that they state that they own and that they're showing, the plot plan depicting that they own, is a claim that they don't own a portion of it. That ultimately is, again, outside of your jurisdiction to make any binding determinations.
Can we just sort of decide on the merits of the project, and regardless of if the water line or the driveway is offside, it's not our purview?
Correct.
It's, I guess it's only in your purview if it's my problem with one of my properties. That's what I'm getting at.
So let me ask, and I have no idea what this other issue was, but was that an issue of Title II property and coming onto it? Or is it, so it's completely separate circumstance?
No, it's not separate circumstance. It's a letter...
How is it not a separate circumstance? You're coming in here and making a claim?
It's a letter from, it's a letter from the Water Department, having concerns about the water line at my own house, talking my separate application. So that's what I'm bringing up. If it was, if it was an issue with this board about my application, then this should be an issue.
And what was the issue with that water line? Was it that you didn't have the legal rights to the water line? It wasn't going across your property?
No, not at all.
So it's a completely separate circumstance?
I disagree. I'm not talking about...
But this board doesn't have any jurisdiction or title issues?
Maybe you should speak up when I file an application.
Again, I wasn't here.
No, you were there.
I have no recollection of something...
Trust me, if you don't have any recollection, then maybe it's nice for you to see a brain doctor, because you were there.
Is that necessary?
Excuse me?
Is that necessary?
It is necessary, okay? Because there was a comment, a derogatory comment that was made to me when you opened up the hearing. So take it how it is. So those are my concerns about this property. I'm not going away. I would have gone away because I didn't know there was a problem. It was a problem that was brought up by my neighbor.
Wait, your concerns are noted.
It was brought up by my neighbor that forced me to spend $3,000 on a survey and, comma, hit some, comma, all right? So that's what happens. And I'm not going away, and for them to do whatever they wanna do, they better straighten out this problem.
I'm aware of that.
I think they are aware of it. Thank you.
Could I make a comment regarding this?
You can speak to the board.
So the reason this all came up is, he previously had this property surveyed in 2017 because he subdivided it. So he knew, his property, so he knew where the property line was. Earlier this year in February, he cleared the entire property of trees because he said his tenants were complaining of rodent problems. At that time, I've already had it surveyed, and there were pink flag marks where the property line was. He crossed that and cleared about 5,000 square feet of my land, which turns out to be about 29 trees he cut down. I also had an environmental scientist because I wanted to make sure that area where the rocks were, I didn't have any water issues because I didn't want to get to this point and get derailed. So I had an environmental scientist, and they noted that there was wetlands at the top of the driveway. When he went for the special permit, I think I was the only neighbor that didn't complain about his property. Here he is in retaliation because he cut down 29 of my trees, and I am now taking actions to rectify. I did ask him just to plant some trees upon my approval. He will not do that, so now I'm taking further actions. And this is where, all of a sudden, now he has his property staked out after he cleared all the land on my property. So that's why this is all coming out tonight.
I appreciate that. We have nothing to do with it.
Okay.
We're gonna look at your application on its merits, make a decision.
Excellent.
All the other things will be handled as they are. I don't know if the street has an easement that gives the Water Department the right to be on a different, I have no idea. So we'll just look at your application on its merits and make a decision.
Sounds good. So we're all set?
So everything you heard was a lie. Just wanna let you know that. And secondly, there's no easements. I already did a title exam. There's no easements. No rights to cross my property, so everything's getting ripped out.
Are there any further questions or comments regarding this application? Seeing none, gotta get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Nancy, second? Peter, all in favor?
Hi. Can I convey up something? You think we need a letter from the East Chelmsford Water Department first?
I do not. I don't, we don't normally get one for any application. Our, we have a list of notified. I think the Water Department does wing in on a key.
The Chelmsford Water District often sends out a template, more recently, from Brandon Kanata, a template letter asking all applicants to review with them prior to construction. And so I believe that might be what Mr. Harvey was referring to with his property on Bartlett, which is what we have recently.
I agree with Mr. Wojczej. This board...
The public hearing is closed.
Well, this board...
We can't take your testimony anymore.
...may get a letter from the Water Department. So I'd suggest that you follow Mr. Wojczej's comment.
Okay, if you're okay.
I don't, I don't know what to say. I don't, if they don't submit, we consider it a non-concern.
Mr. Chairman, again, I don't know what exactly the East Chelmsford Water District would send. They are in no more of a position than you are to comment on a title dispute. And that's ultimately what this question is, is whether or not there is a right for that water line to cross over where it's crossing over. It's currently there. It's currently serving the existing house, correct?
I believe so.
I don't think that you're going to get any pertinent information from East Chelmsford Water District. If there is an action filed in a court of competent jurisdiction, you know, that will lead to whatever it leads to, but I don't think it has any impact on your decision tonight.
Thank you. As I said, is there any further questions from the board regarding this application?
Nope.
Someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve 63 Carlisle Street special permit under Section 195-6.1 for the construction of an addition for a limited accessory apartment and any other relief deemed necessary in connection with the letters read.
All right. Now we got a second?
I'll second that.
Peter, pitch to it?
I'm sorry.
I'm quick. All in favor?
Yes.
Do you unanimous? I wish you well with your efforts here. I think there's some things you should tread cautious with, understand your rights and how they're presented, so as far as we're concerned, we approve the project.
Awesome, thank you.
You too. Our next application is 290 Littleton Road, Unit 8. Yvette Samo's is requesting a special permit under Section 195, Attachment 1, term on a massage therapy business and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the commercial CB District. Good evening. I could ask for your name and address for the record?
Yvette Samo's, and the address is 290 Littleton Road, Unit 8. Yvette Simoes and the address is 29 Littleton Road, Unit 8.
You going to open a massage therapy?
Yes. So I'm a licensed massage therapist and also an esthetician.
A what?
Esthetician.
You could maybe just lean in a little so we could pick up on it.
Sorry. So I'm a professional massage therapist, licensed massage therapist and a licensed esthetician.
Oh, excellent. Are there any questions from the board regarding this application?
I guess usually we just ask if they have the Board of Health approval and that's about it.
So she, Yvette Simoes did, with her application, she submitted her professional resume as well as all the licensure, state licensure proof...
That's what we want.
That she is state licensed.
Certificate of insurance.
Yep, certificate of insurance as well, more importantly, her state license for massage therapy. So we have that in the packet.
Okay. That's, I'm good for you. Any other questions from the board?
So a lot of what you submitted, you show a New Hampshire address. I assume you recently moved.
Yes, I did, yeah.
Do we have any letters?
So the address, it's the business address?
Right.
That's listed.
I don't see a state license in here.
That actually, and I can explain, I have a paper copy of it that she just dropped off in the office because she didn't have her hard copy printed out. But I looked it up online with the database and it stated it was active. And I do actually have a copy of it now.
I'll take your word for it. Thank you.
I can pass it along too if anybody wants to see it. But in the application packet attached to the agenda is a printout of the state database that states that she is active and I'll pull that up as well.
Good.
I just didn't get it to add that to the revised agenda.
Do we have a photo of the property?
There was a photo on the license in the, in the thing that I noticed.
Of the property, you said?
Yeah.
It's that yellow one, like next to the Elks?
Let me pull it up.
Next to the what?
The Elks, Elks on Littleton Avenue.
Okay, okay. I couldn't get out of my mind that this was one of the...
Oh, next door to it.
One of the condo building.
It's the yellow one, right?
Right next to it, yeah.
No, I know what you're talking about.
It's a business plaza.
Okay, so it's a standalone building? Or like a strip mall, right?
Like a strip mall.
Yeah, it's a plaza.
Where do I just put the letters for you? There you go. They all no comments. And here you go, let me state those in, and the determination letter from Jose.
If she's state licensed, why does she need approval from this board? We appear... As good as anything else, I guess.
I can explain that a little bit. The, the use is in the, requires a special, so massage therapy as a business use requires a special permit within the bylaw. And that bylaw was put in place years before massage therapy became state licensed. Massage therapy only became state licensed in 2008. Before that, each, each massage therapist had to obtain a license from each individual Board of Health within the town they worked with.
I'm glad you're here.
Glad, glad. She's good. Okay, I have a letter regarding 29 Littleton Road, Unit 8, from the police with no comments. I have a letter from the Board of Health, 29 Littleton Road, Unit 8, from the Board of Health, no comments. And I have a letter from the Fire Prevention Office. Oh, no comments, yes. With no comments for 29 Littleton Road. And engineering also has no concerns.
And the Building Commissioner provided his determination letter for this...
Which required her to apply for the special permit.
Perfect.
We'll open this up to the audience and see if there are any questions or concerns regarding this application. Seeing none? Except a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close.
Hey Nancy? Peter seconds?
You gotta get quick.
I know, I'm not quick.
You're doing good early, then you get a little tired, just slow it down.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Nancy.
Nancy.
Peter seconds.
Is that good, Peter?
Yeah. And we would need a motion...
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for 29 Littleton Road, Unit 8, for Yvette Simoes under Section 195, Attachment 1, to run massage therapy business at the site with respect to any letters that were written to the records.
Second?
Second down.
That's good, you were quick.
I'm quick.
All in favor? Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Item six is 29 Nancy Road. Diana and Benjamin LeBeau.
LeBeau, yes.
Requesting a special permit under Section 195.8 for nonconformity and/or 195B conformity for a 20% reduction in the front setback requirement to build a four by six, four foot six by 10 foot entryway addition and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB District as parcel ID MAP 95 block 376. I get your name and address for the record?
Sure. I'm Diana LeBeau, 29 Nancy Road. This is my husband Benjamin, same address. Thank you for considering our application. So we, we purchased the home about a year ago and getting through our first winter, finding out that we had no entryway with two young children meant that we learned very quickly how our dining room carried in every single thing that the boys stepped in outside. There is no mudroom. So we, we would like to be able to build that mudroom onto the front of our house. And that's why it's such a small addition, that you'll see the 10 feet by 4.6 or 4 and 1/2 feet. What our hope is, is that this can be sort of a liminal space for us as we enter the house, where the boys can leave their shoes and backpacks and coats without having us walk straight into our living room. What we learned is that we are, our house was a little bit too close to the street for us to be able to just go through a regular permitting process. So that's why we're asking for consideration.
Thank you.
So you're looking for an airlock, basically?
Yeah, basically. We anticipate it not even necessarily being heated. We just want it to be a space where it's sort of a pre-season porch.
Question from the board?
Is the front yard setback setback 40 feet?
Yes.
From the front, yeah.
In this?
Just fitting.
Well, the existing setback is 36.6.
Well, we've given them a special, we're giving them a special permit.
But what I'm saying is they're already encroaching. So does that get grandfathered in?
That does get grandfathered in. And in fact, you could approve this just through a Section 6 finding. Because it's already nonconforming.
Right. Are we increasing the nonconformity?
But you're not creating a new nonconformity. So you can increase the intensity of the existing nonconformity through a finding. You just can't create a new nonconformity. So it's sort of belt and suspenders here because we also have the special permit provision that allows you to reduce the requirements.
And I don't want to make a mess of this, but if they were to make it larger, would that still be the, that we could do a Section 6?
Yes. The whole house is nonconforming. It's up the back.
No, the side is 35.
No, I'm just saying.
The two side setbacks are acceptable. It's really just the front. And I'm not trying to cause you any problems, but I think that you could think about, if you wanted to make that a little bigger, you could.
Yeah. My point was to help you make, make it easier for you.
It just seems by the time you add a six inch wall, you know, you're going to have a very... I'm not telling you to make it bigger either. You may be very comfortable with it, I just thought it adjusted.
We initially did mention that we would like to make it larger, but we're told during the process of applying for this application that we would be limited to 32 feet setback from the street, which is why we got the drawing, the, basically the maximum that we could.
And what would be the limit there? Well, technically, zero. I mean, you could...
Well, you've got to make a finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I think if they wanted to go right up to the lot line, you're probably not going to be able to make that finding. So there are limits.
Right, right.
But there is also some room for them to play if you want to reconsider what you want to do and potentially come back.
I, I think we have at this point decided that we're comfortable with the more limited addition because...
Again, I'm not trying to throw the curveball and it just...
We can't design it for you.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think at this point, we would prefer to do whatever allows us to take action soonest because we would prefer to not get through another winter without an entryway.
You would have to continue to follow that path. So it would be best to go the route we're at, if that's what your wish is. Just thought I'd throw it out there and make a mess out of this one too. Okay, I'll read in the letters that I have regarding 29 Nancy Road from the Engineering Department. Number one, the proposed entryway addition will be near or possibly over the existing sewer service. The applicant must contact the DPW Sewer Division to coordinate any necessary actions to preserve or alter the sewer service. Two, erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The road must be kept free of dirt and swept regularly. Consider Lee Seela Joyce, Town of Chelmsford, DPW. Regarding 29 Nancy Road and the Fire Prevention Office, there are no comments. Regarding 29 Nancy Road and the Chelmsford Water District, there are no comments. And those are the letters that I have. Oh, there's one more. The Police Department also has no comments regarding 29 Nancy Road. And a second one? And the Board of Health also regarding 29 Nancy Road has no comments. Further questions? Going to open this up to the public, see if there are any comments or concerns regarding this application?
I respectfully suggest that we close the public hearing for 29 Nancy Road.
Second?
Second by Nancy? All in favor?
Aye.
Second of his suggestion.
We could take this up, maybe in the form of a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for 29 Nancy Road for the four foot six by 10 foot entryway addition.
What's we got to the letters?
What's we got, all the letters written in too?
Got to look, got to look right. Seconded by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
The next hearing is 43 Bartlett Street. Elizabeth Gabriel, trustee, requesting an administration, administrative appeal of the Building Commissioner's determination letter and a special permit under Section 195, 6.1, for a pre-existing detached, limited accessory apartment and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB District. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. Doug Housler from Lampard House on Rodman, representing Liz Gabriel, who's the owner of the property at 43 Bartlett Street. This is a somewhat unique application under Section 6.1, which usually envisions that you get permission before something is built. In this particular instance, the accessory apartment was built 33 years ago. The town was in fact aware of it as I submitted documentation in the package, package of materials to the board that showed that both the Sewer Department, the Plumbing Inspector and the former Building Inspector Tony Zagzoo had all been to the property over those last 30 years. In fact, going back to 2008, 2009, and approved of the sewer design system that served actually the accessory apartment as well as the house. And that the Plumbing Inspector said everything was appropriate for the kitchen and further with the Sewer Department. And then also, I'm trying to think what else they did at that point. And I don't know why Tony was out there particularly to do anything other than perhaps check for smoke detectors and such. There are smoke detectors in the limited accessory apartment. The limited accessory apartment is basically 1/3 of the former three car garage. So they converted one of the bays and a small portion in the rear into a limited accessory apartment in 1990, I believe, for Liz Gabriel's mother. Or I think it was either her mother or Nick's, Nick Gabriel's mother, excuse me. She occupied that for 20-plus years, passed away. Liz and Nick owned the property at 43 Bartlett. They have primarily moved to the Cape to their home. And their daughter resides in their home and the main house, 43 Bartlett Street, raising her children. And when Nick and Liz come up to visit, they use the accessory apartment. And they're up fairly frequently because it's obviously not that long a ride from the Cape and they go to see their daughter and grandchildren and friends. So they'd like to use, continue to use the limited accessory apartment that has existed for 30 some odd years. So that also brought up a few unique circumstances here because usually the bylaw 6.1 envisions that we have to provide you with, you know, building plans and certified plot plans to show what it's going to look like and what will be the footprint and all those kind of things. I gave you better than that. I gave you actual pictures of every single room and the dimensions of those rooms. There is no requirement that it be a stamped site plan. It just needs to show the layout, which is what I did. And that was in my handwriting with my measurements with my client. And I'll represent to the board, it is under 700 square, 750 square feet by quite some measure. So we're not trying to push the limit here. So I provided that plan. I have had my client sign the limited accessory apartment use restrictions. I believe we sent a scan over. And I'd like to approach and provide the original of that. Which is one of the other requirements for you to consider in the application. In addition to that, my client daughter, Sarah, has gone to many of the neighbors and she obtained signatures for quite a few, but most particularly the ones that are a butt, director butters to her on the same side of the street. And they've signed off in support of this application.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that leads me now to, I call it, the third discussion point, which is the fact that the garage is not contained or attached to the primary dwelling unit. The pictures you could see, if you could go back one, thank you, right there. I'm sorry, could you go one back? So you could see that the main house from Bartlett Street, long driveway. To the left of, you see the drive, the garage doors there, the white. To the left of that and in front of it, there are three parking spaces that have been there for 30-plus years. Plus the two car garage has space. There's more than ample parking. I also would like to report, I, from what I've searched, there has never been a complaint until recently about the fact that this apartment existed. And that's because, as you can see from all the pictures and as you go through, the amount of landscaping around this garage, you can hardly even see the garage. It's entirely hidden, pretty much. Which is, I'm pretty sure why the Fire Department contacted me to say, there's probably a letter to that effect, that they want the mailbox in the front if you approve with a separate address for 911 emergency purposes, which we would absolutely agree with. So we have no problems with that whatsoever. So then I wanted to address the issue by the fact that it's detached. It's detached probably by a distance of about 25 feet. So you walk out of the rear of the main house and you walk along a brick path and keep some pavement and you enter the door to the apartment. Your board has the authority under six point one, I think it's under E. You're allowed to grant certain waivers about design. I'm going to try to pull that up on my handy dandy phone here that says... It's still remaining a single family, that's absolutely true, it is. It's not being rented out to persons who are not extended family members. It's being occupied by an owner, and this came up earlier in the question about the trust. Same issue. It is being occupied by the current owner, Liz, who is a trustee of a family trust of which she and her husband are the beneficiaries. They are, they de facto owners through the trust. I believe it is under, I'm just trying to find the particular... Under the special permit provisions, we don't have it as a right, but under the special permit restrictions, you are permitted to allow for waivers. And I'm asking you to provide for a waiver because of the unique circumstances. It's existing, you have pictures of everything, it's been almost inspected by the town previously on a number of occasions. It's been no secret, and it's built. So we don't really need the usual requirements that your bylaw suggests. And I'm suggesting to you that it's probably even better, as you can see all these pictures. It's a one-bedroom, it's got a kitchen, it's being occupied by Mr. and Mrs. Gabriel when they're up. And I believe that you're not required, it's not an absolute requirement that you cannot, you have a right to waive the requirement about it being attached. Because you're, I'm asking for the special permit. I wouldn't have a right to do it as a matter of right, but I can ask you that relief because we're seeking a special permit. I, you can tell this is a very well-maintained property. The house itself was built sometime back prior to or around nineteen hundred. It's a half-acre lot. The three-car garage was originally at the property when my clients bought it forty-some odd years ago, forty-five years ago. In terms of outward appearance, no one would see the fact that, an outward appearance would see a garage and a single-family home. They wouldn't even see the accessory apartment from the street, it's so far back. So I don't think there's anything that's detrimental to the general area. Certainly no parking problems, we're not creating significantly extra traffic, so I don't see that as an issue. We would have had, encountered significant problems, I guess, if, back in nineteen ninety when they were trying to build an accessory apartment. The land itself is on a lot of granite and ledge. So they took advantage of what the existing foundation that was there for the garage and used that instead. So that's where we are at. So it's kind of asking for permission after having it been built for thirty-three years. We ask you to continue, to consider this. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can and see if you could provide any input, and we'll address any questions you have.
You said there were no complaints until recently. What is the recent complaint?
As stated in the letter that I submitted, there was a complaint made to the Building Inspector, Building Commissioner, by, and a butter from across the street. And that in turn required Jose to act, and it was determined that there was no existing special permit for a limited accessory apartment in the file, which then triggered a letter from Jose asking us to remedy the situation, and we immediately filed for the application. For protective reasons of my client's interest, I asked that it might also have alternative relief in the form of overruling the Building Commissioner, but I'm withdrawing that portion of it. I'm only asking to grant the limited accessory apartment at this point. I think Jose has been to the property and has walked through the limited accessory apartment. He can confirm to you that these are accurate pictures. So I gave you the interior, the exterior, I've given you proof that the town was pretty much aware of all this. And I'll apologize on behalf of my clients, they just really didn't understand the fact in nineteen ninety that there was a permit process to be required, to be met. So they, they do apologize. These are people that are forty-five, fifty-year residents of the town. Nick was a former member of the school committee for many, many years. They comply with obligations in town regulations, so they are very apologetic about this situation. But they want to be with their grandchildren and their daughter. And that's exactly what the intent of this bylaw is all about.
If I may, I apologize to everyone. I was scrolling through the photos quickly because I was looking for one specific one, the facade of the building. And what I'm noticing is when I scanned in, like, the fifty or so photos, the facade didn't scan in. But I have the hard copy, so I'm gonna send it around so you can all see what the, what the structure looks like. And then the photo that's up here now, just to kind of give you bearings, I'm gonna zoom in. This window, the LAA jets out a little bit. This window is the, the other, the two bays of the other two, the base for the two-car garage and the driveways here, just to give you an idea of what you're looking at. And I apologize, I don't know why this photo didn't, didn't scan in.
So the room you're looking at up on the board is, it's a view from entering into the limited accessory apartment and looking into what I call the living area, which has a little bit of a sit-down place to have some dinner or food and a sitting area to watch TV and entertainment. You'll see that the TV's in the back of that portion. The area where there's a bench was the kitchen, has a, it's a basic kitchen, small, but has everything that you need for a kitchen. That hallway leads back to the bathroom, some storage area, and a bedroom. That's the extent. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did you say that this, you were seeking a special permit to get relief from the fact that it's not attached, which is part of the LAA ordinance?
Because you have, the board has the discretion to do so, to waive the requirements of design.
So that would be true of anyone who came in for an LAA?
Depending on the circumstances, I, I mean, I'm trying to submit to you that in this instance, it's because it's already been built and I'm asking for the relief. I would also probably, in all instances, if it hadn't been built, would still be here because of the existing ledge and granite that's underneath the backyard area where it's the only other place it could have possibly been built. And it would have been extremely expensive and difficult to build. This was already an existing foundation that they just used.
Considering the age, should it have been grandfathered to begin with?
Unfortunately, without a permit, it isn't. I looked into that, but it's a fair question, thank you.
We have an existing building that has no protections.
Because he didn't apply for the permit.
Can I clarify that?
Oh, please do, I'm confused by it.
So, chapter forty-eight, section seven does provide some protection to structures that were constructed in violation of the zoning bylaws. So if there was a structure that was constructed pursuant to an improperly issued building permit, then both the structure and the use would get protection. And that's after six years. So in the first six years, the Building Commissioner can enforce zoning against it. Once that six year ends, moving forward, you cannot enforce zoning against it. For a structure that was built without a building permit, there is no protection for the use. The structure itself is protected after ten years. So in this instance, the Building Commissioner cannot order the demolition or the removal of the structure, but can order the cessation of the use because that use doesn't get any protection because it wasn't commenced either lawfully, you know, which would make it a pre-existing non-conforming use, or wasn't commenced pursuant to an erroneously issued building permit. It doesn't get the section seven protection. Couldn't agree more. Perfect summary.
Thank you. At least good when two lawyers agree. So we do have the ability to issue a waiver for this.
Yes.
To my knowledge, we have not issued a waiver ever.
So, that I think needs some discussion. So the bylaw, the requirement in the bylaw that talks about it being attached, and it's not quite as direct as that, but it's under limited accessory apartment, an area contained within an owner occupied as existing as of the date of application, single-family dwelling unit that maintains internal access and circulation to the dwelling unit. So that's where the interpretation is, that it has to be an attached unit.
And that was not, not in subsection D?
So zoning board of appeals may issue a waiver for deviation from any of the design standards in subsection D. Subsection D, subsection one of subsection D does say ingress, egress, access. But then it says adequate provision as determined by the Building Inspector shall be provided for separate ingress and egress to the outside of the limited accessory apartment. To the extent possible, exterior passageways and accessways shall not distract from the, the single-family appearance of the dwelling. Any new exterior entrance for the LAA shall be located to the side or rear of the single-family dwelling. Staircases serving a second or third floor shall be enclosed. An interior doorway shall be provided between the LAA and the principal dwelling unit. So anything that's within that definition can be waived by the board. The question is, is the requirement that the unit be attached encompassed within that definition? And that, that's something for you to really wrestle with.
That's why I was being very specific in the request. I'm not trying to duck anything, I put it right out there.
So that's the determination you're going to need to make. And if you determine that it is within that section and it is something you can waive, then you would go through your process and make the determination as to whether or not granting a special permit and waiving this provision is appropriate. If you determine that it's not, something that can be waived under the bylaw, then it would require the applicant to come back and request a variance.
A use variance?
No, it would be a variance of the specific term of the bylaw that requires it to be attached.
Right.
That's not a use variance, that is a dimensional variance. And I presume, and I'm not going to speak for the applicant, but the basis for that request would be the soil conditions.
That's exactly right, Paul. It would be the, that would be the hardship in a variance application, no question.
But before you get to that, you have to make the determination as to whether or not you have the right to make this waiver.
Brian, I think we've done this before, a couple, three years ago. There was one that wasn't attached. And I believe we approved it. But it goes back so far, I don't know all the specifics, I don't even remember the address. We have talked considerably about LAAs being attached. There was one, I forget the exact couple they were in, there was a garage beside them, there was a driveway beside the house and the garage. And they were forced to modify things so it was attached to the house. This would go completely opposite to that. Allowing it to happen.
If we were allowing it, it would be in the opposite direction. I, I remember, I don't remember the address, but I do remember the...
It was that red barn and there was a ranch.
Cabot Street?
E Coolidge.
Coolidge. Coolidge, yeah.
E Coolidge.
Good memory, Jose.
In response to that, I just might add, the unique circumstance there is that, in that instance, it hadn't been built yet. This has been built for 33 years. That alone differentiates.
I actually think it was built.
It was built.
In violation, but not by any years. I think it was months. So there are similarities, but yeah.
Well, if it hasn't been grandfathered in stature, it's certainly been grandfathered in attitude, history.
It's, yeah, de facto, right.
So I like, I like what, honestly, I don't remember if it was Paul or Brian that said this, that really, I mean, it's been an existing use for a long time. It just doesn't have any protection as an LAA.
I just, I'm struggling, like, because you can't tear it down. But if we don't approve it, then what happens? They still can use it, it's just not approved?
They can back for a hardship variance, right? Do I have that right?
Well, it couldn't be used as a limited accessory apartment. But that doesn't mean that it can't be used.
Right.
You can have a freestanding structure on your property. It can have a kitchen. It can have a bath. It could have a bedroom or an office. Are you in agreement with that, Jose?
I respectfully disagree with you.
The requirement would be...
So my, and again, I also respectfully disagree with town council.
I mean, you're the arbitrator here, actually. I'm just saying.
Where I'm struggling with this is really the definition of what is an LLA. And if you read the definition, even on the waiver that you, the board has the authority to render waiver, but it's within the LLA itself. But the LLA, according to the definition, it is my understanding and interpretation that they intend to, the writer of this provision intended to the, for the LLA to be attached.
No, I, yeah, I don't disagree at all.
So...
Yeah, I'm not sure that's inconsistent with what I said.
Nor mine. We meet all the criteria except for the fact that it's not attached.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the, your proposition is really to keep the LLA detached.
It is. I'm asked for a waiver of that requirement.
And that's what I'm saying, that the bylaws, in order for that LLA to function as an LLA, has to be attached.
Unless a waiver is granted. That's the point.
But the waiver in this language, it is for the...
Design standards.
For the design of the LLA itself.
One through five in subsection D.
Not to have it detached and have the waiver on, is to have it attached. And yeah, you have the right to render certain, for example, we talked about, there was one here that exceeded 750 square feet, in which I believe, I don't recall if you approved, but I think you used that right to allow the design to be larger. So, but in general, the definition of what it, if it's going to be used as an LLA, it is my understanding that it needs to be attached.
I know exactly where you are with that. I mean, the area...
I didn't take a position on that. I said that that's up for your interpretation.
And I'm really trying to accomplish that, I guess, and understand it as I should. An area contained within owner occupied as existing, which is the case, as of the date of application, single-family dwelling unit that maintains internal access and circulation to the dwelling unit, which is where we failed that. Now, that is in the limited accessory apartment definition, but it is not listed in the design standards, one through five. Though ingress, egress, and access is, which is, you know, pretty wide open.
And it, but it does deviate from the design standards. The design is attached or not attached. It's as close to design, it's architectural design.
And in that, in the design standards, it also says, "To the extent possible, exterior passageways and limited accessory," I'm sorry, "accessways shall not detract from the single-family appearance of the dwelling." I'm not saying in a sense that to build some sort of...
Could we build a walkway that's...
Encloses it.
Encloses it, yeah.
Which is precisely what we did require on E Coolidge.
That would be wiping, first of all, as I said, the soil conditions don't support that. With all due respect, it would be a complete waste of time, energy, and money.
I don't disagree. We still have the...
And I'm trying to give you the argument that that design requirement is within your discretion. I don't think it's a mandatory, and especially in the instance where it's a pre-existing unit.
And I guess my point to Jose is if we said, okay, this is no longer an LLA, what would preclude that from being used as interior space in the home or space? So if I choose to build a two-car garage on my property, and above that I choose to put a man cave...
For the sake of this discussion, I think we should probably stay within the LLA discussion, because if it's not an LLA, I can prevent the applicant from using the space as a playroom or game room or...
I guess certainly that's my point. If you don't call it an LLA, you give up your protections of an LLA, but you also can use the space. If he said, "This is no longer an LLA," would you put a, not a stop work order even, or a, you know, would it...
No, because like town council said, the effort...
Wouldn't it be the same as if someone built an LAA and the parents died? Now they're stuck with the space. So they can use it for whatever they want.
Right, they can't rent it.
Same thing.
Right, correct. They couldn't rent it. But if someone came there and wanted to stay there, there'd be no...
It would have to be a family member.
The thing about it is, and I think with Paul, we worked on the LLA going to town meeting and put it together, and what we, I think, hung our hat on was the fact that the second kitchen was not allowed in a home. And that had to be really part of the LLA approval process.
That's right.
Now you can have a second kitchen. So to have this space that has a kitchen that's not attached, that's not an LLA, I don't, I don't know where, you know, I'm not in charge of that, of course, but I don't know how that could be enforced. If he says, "Okay, it's not an LLA," and he walks out, he's allowed to use the space, correct?
But the intention is that they want to use it as an LLA, period. They don't want to use it as anything else.
And the other thing, and I don't know that this is ever defined in any of this, is these people are not living there on a permanent basis. They're somewhat coming in from Cape Cod to stay for periods of time, but, you know, when I go down the Cape, I sleep in a garage. My brother's house, that's, the cots got laid out and you sleep in the garage.
And again, we're, I think we're trying to be, well, my clients are trying to be as compliant as possible, and to avoid the situation of just having somebody, somebody stay in that unit. We're saying, we're committing that it will be a family member, and only a family member. And if it's not a family member, it's not going to be used for that purpose. We're willing to commit that.
That's the definition of an LLA.
That is, but that's my point. We're trying to satisfy the town, rather than duck it and just do it in a sneaky fashion, which we probably could do.
We've already talked loosely about the requirements for LAA's, that there's not enough, in today's world, there's not enough specific language in here, and that there needs to be somehow some better language.
And that could go forward to town meeting, and we could look at...
Right, but if you were to say...
Creating the correct...
If you were to say that you now are waiving that it has to be attached, that's setting a precedent of language, but it's not in here.
I'm actually of the opinion that we can't waive that it is attached. I don't think that, I think that the subsection D, one through five, is not as specific as the definition of a limited accessory apartment.
Right.
So that granting a waiver, in my opinion, would be, it just wouldn't be effective. I think the solution would be to grant a variance, which would mean continuing and coming back as a variance, because this is the less onerous of the two. The variance is more, after you re-advertize?
You would have to re-notice.
Okay, so then let me solve the problem, I hope, and I'll listen to town council's comments.
And the, you know, the idea of the ledge being in the backyard...
I understand that.
Is a suitable tenant for granting a variance.
I believe then, what I'd like to get a sense, though, is we'd be asking for the variance as to the 6.1 limited accessory apartment, specific condition of being attached. So I need to know that the other elements of the LAA are acceptable to the board. And then I can come back in to ask for the variance.
Are you asking for a straw poll?
Yeah. There's no sense going through all that effort if...
I know, it's detailed. Are we comfortable with a straw poll at this point? Has people made some decisions?
Oh, is there anyone that's going to talk?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
I'll be happy to step down for a moment.
I'm going to read the letters, and then we'll open it up to the audience.
Aaron, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
I have a letter from the Chelmsford Fire Department and Fire Prevention Office. Dear members of the board, this officer reviewed the application and recognized a limited accessory apartment at 43 Bartlett Street finds the following. This department is concerned that if more than one dwelling on a property, then occupants should be identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as 43 Bartlett Street, 43A Bartlett Street. Both addresses must be visible to the building, on the building to the street. The applicant shall make an application to addresses to the Chelmsford E 911 Committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Drewes. This department is not interested in official change of address being recorded in the deed. It is only our intent to distinguish this home to emergency responders. This office would approve this plan with these conditions, and I ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Danielle Gustavas, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter regarding 43 Bartlett Street from the police with no comments. I have a letter from DBW Engineering regarding 43 Bartlett Street with no comments. I have a letter from the Board of Health for 43 Bartlett Street with no comments. And I have a letter here.
Public comment.
Dear Mrs. De Silva, I have reviewed the application for 43 Bartlett Street and found that the application submitted by Attorney Housler is incomplete pursuant to the mandatory requirements of S 195 6.1G, which states, "For purposes of both by right and special permit applications, the following shall be submitted. Certain required documentation has been filed with the applicant, and therefore the file is deemed incomplete." I repeat, "Certain required documentation has not been filed by the applicant, and therefore the file is deemed incomplete. The board cannot waive this requirement when the bylaw language specifically states 'shall.' Furthermore, Section 195 103 Special Permits, Subsection C, Procedures 1 states, 'An application shall not be deemed complete until all copies of the required information and documentation have been filed with the special permit authority. Once again, the Board of Appeals cannot waive this requirement when the bylaw language specifically states 'shall.' I request that the complete application be deemed incomplete and returned to the applicant without a hearing. Respectfully submitted, William Harvey, 36 Bartlett Street, Legal of Butter.'" Those are the letters that I have.
Did you state, the letter from the fire department said that the unit has to be seen from the street?
The...
The numbers.
The identification. 43A would be seen from the street.
You mean mailbox?
I think that would be suitable, yes. In fact, I think in one of the letters, it said mailbox, but I don't know if it did in that one. The responders want to know, there's two homes.
And that it's registered, too.
I'll bring it up to the audience, then, right?
If you shouldn't, I'm just waiting to see if she's showing me here. Yeah, see, on the other one, it says on the, "The office will require two mailboxes identifying the property, 43 Bartlett Street, 43A Bartlett Streets. Both addresses must be visible on the building to the street." That would be required.
Visible on the building. You can't see the building from the street, so how can I...
Again, the assumption is made that it's a building.
You could put the two mailboxes on the main dwelling, in the front, if it's facing Main Road, because sometimes LAA's face the side or back.
The requirement is that the front door does not face the street in an LLA. It's not necessarily an obvious entrance to maintain the facade of a single-family home. So I'm going to open this up to the audience. If someone has any questions, in favor or opposition, now is the time.
Good evening, board members. My name is William Harvey. I reside at 36 Bartlett Street. I'm a legal of butter to the applicant. Board members, I'm requesting that you deny this application for a special permit for a limited accessory apartment located at 43 Bartlett Street. First and foremost, the procedures on how to file an application that the previous applicants that came before you filed appropriately. In effect, the procedures are on the community developments website, as well as a form that's provided by the community development, as well as the information within the bylaw that can't be changed or cannot be reconsidered. Bylaws are created by town meeting representatives. They hear arguments regarding bylaws, and they make a decision. And when the decision is approved, at that time, the bylaw cannot be changed, and the board members have to follow the bylaws strictly. If for any reason that a person is aggrieved by the language of a bylaw, they have the opportunity to go to town meeting and request an amendment to the bylaw. Now, in this case, the application that was submitted by the applicant must be rejected without a hearing, as the application is incomplete pursuant to the mandatory requirements of Section 195 6.1G, that this board does not have the power to waive. Under that section is referred to as submission requirements. For purposes of both by right and special permit applications, the following shall be submitted. And I emphasize the word "shall." There's no leeway with regards to this when the legal language of "shall" is in the statement. So the applications to follow shall be submitted, and the ones that were not submitted were architectural plans for the entire structure, including building elevations and floor plans. The second requirement that was not followed or submitted with the application was a site plan showing, at a minimum, the footprint of all structures, all building entrances and exits, parking and screening from a butters. Photographs are not a site plan. Handwritten measurements of a room are not architectural plans. Under Section 195-103 Special Permit, Subsection C, Procedures 1. All applications shall not be deemed complete until all copies of required information and documentations have been filed with the special permit granting authority, which is your board. This cannot be viewed as an oversight or mistake. The bylaw presented as is and voted by town meeting must be strictly adhered to as written. The application as submitted by the applicant must be denied due to the fact that the application as submitted details a pre-existing unlawful single-family dwelling not within an existing single-family dwelling. It's clearly a secondary dwelling that's not permitted in Chelmsford zoning in an RB district. You cannot have two dwellings in an RB district. Section 195-61A objectives. One, to allow the provisions of a limited accessory apartment, and again, this word will be stated over and over, within, as an existing single-family dwelling for extended family members of the owner. Clearly stated, limited accessory apartment within, not detached. Definition is clearly stated. The board has no authority whatsoever, without town meeting approval, to change or interpret the definition as stated herein. The definition of a limited accessory apartment. An area contained, once again, within, an owner occupied as existing single-family dwelling unit that maintains internal access and circulation to the dwelling unit, in which is restricted to extended family members consisting of provisions for bathing, cooking, and sleeping. The inclusion of an apartment, once again, within a single-family dwelling unit does not convert single-family dwelling unit into a two-family. I'll also point out to Section 195 6.1, Subsection C, applicability and eligibility. Number one, the building inspector may issue a permit by right for an LLA based upon the following criteria. A, the LLA, the LAA is located, once again, within an existing owner occupied, single-family property located within a zoning district. B, the LAA is located, once again, within the existing dwelling unit inclusive of legal non-conforming structures. Now, there's been an argument that this board may make deviations because it's not connected. Well, this board cannot make deviations relative to having two separate, single-family dwelling units in an RB district. Has no authority. It's not within zoning. Furthermore, this board cannot waive this requirement because you have to go by the bylaw. The bylaw states the limited accessory apartment has to be within the principal structure. Furthermore, you may have heard an argument that, well, there's a section that deals with... Let me just look at my notes. There's a section, 195-61H. Criteria for approval limits this board to reasonable deviations from the requirements of this bylaw. And that has to do with disabled people. When this bylaw is so strict, it'll allow reasonable deviations from the bylaw. And that even goes to disabled people. It certainly, certainly, if it wasn't a person or a disabled person, this detached house would obviously be a reasonable, I mean, not a reasonable deviation. house would obviously be a reasonable, I mean, not a reasonable deviation. So relative with the argument about design standards, the design standards in Section 195, 6.1, Section D, 1, is clear that design standards only apply to the inside of the limited accessory apartment. In no way could anybody view this as allowing a design standard to make the limited accessory apartment not attached to the dwelling unit. Design standards, ingress, egress, access, all dealing with the inside, adequate provision as determined by the building inspector, shall be provided for separate ingress and egress to the outside of the limited accessory apartment. To the extent possible, exterior passageways and accessways shall not detract from the single-family appearance of the dwelling. Any new exterior entrance for the limited accessory apartment shall be located to the rear of the single-family dwelling. Staircases serving a second or third floor shall be enclosed, and interior doorway shall be provided to the limited accessory apartment in the principal dwelling. Again, this bylaw is clear as day with no deviations whatsoever to permit a secondary detached dwelling. The bylaw as written must be interpreted as it's written. Within, limited accessory apartments have to be within. And again, deviations can only be considered relative to the architectural features of the inside of the home. And this board, as I stated, has no authority whatsoever to grant a waiver to have a secondary dwelling on a single-family lot in an RB district. And that's specifically under 195-12. Multiple principal structures states "except in the residential districts," which means it's not allowed in the residential districts. More than one principal non-residential structure may be erected on a lot pursuant to a special permit issued by the planning board in accordance with Section 195, 103 hearing in the following conditions. So whether or not this property has been in existence for three years, 30 years, or 300 years, the law states that it's in violation of the use table of the zoning bylaws of Chomset. And that's what you have to go by. It's a violation, and it can't be overlooked, and the application must be denied. Otherwise, you're going to create people to be allowed to come in and ask for secondary detached dwelling units to be considered as a limited accessory apartment. It's not allowed by bylaw, and you'll set a precedent. Because if you allow one person to do it, you have to allow the other person to do it, unless it's me. Thank you.
Hey, Paul, under what he was reading, you know, everything he was saying, obviously, is true, but if a complaint's filed in Subsection H, number 2, if a complaint's filed, then isn't it appropriate actions that this board is taking right now?
I'm sorry, which section are you referring to?
So I'm in the, sorry.
195, 61.
1.
H2.
H2. It says if a complaint is filed with the building inspector, you know, shall go there and look at it, and then they have to file an appeal with us, which they've done, right? Everything right now has been done properly, based on that?
Correct. They have filed an appeal, although they're dropping that appeal and just moving forward on the special permit request for the LLA.
Right. So that's, well, that's what's in this section. Okay. I just want to make sure I understand how that works. Okay.
Are there any other comments from the audience? I'm not sure we want to close the public meeting just yet. Maybe we should try to organize.
I think there was a request for a straw vote.
Yep.
A request for?
A straw vote, which you're going to want to do with the hearing open.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody want to start? I think the waiver is a challenge, but I do think a variance is an option that we could consider with topography. Obviously, my own opinion. I really can't question enough the need for an LLA. I just don't know that that, because of changes to the law, is...
What I'm asking for, Brian, is with the presumption that I'll come back asking for the variance on that issue, are there any other issues that, of the things that have been presented, that are questionable in any of the board members' minds? Or are they satisfied with all of the other issues but for the attached, you know?
Yet to be observed or determined.
That's the only thing I'm asking. Exclude that, presume I have to come back.
Well, probably a set of plans and a plot plan and all that kind of stuff, right? I mean, if that's what's required.
Well, plot plan's been submitted.
It has.
Yes. The reason I didn't go through for the architectural is because we're, it's existing.
Yeah, I get it. I understand.
It seems wasteful. It really does seem wasteful in this instance.
Is the ledge area between the house and the structure?
Yes.
Above ground level? You talked about that the garage is built on ledge.
No, I didn't say that. I said the garage has its own foundation.
Right.
But to attach, or to build something new to attach to the house in the rear would be a problem, would be soil problems.
It could be, well, the garage is where it is because of other existing ledge, which I believe is visible in certain portions of the yard.
That's correct.
But if you could build to the house from the unit, and there may be ledge there, but the ledge is not protruding up above ground level, there's no reason why you couldn't build over to the house, even though there is ledge. The ledge is not in the ledge.
Anything is possible, you know? I mean, yes.
Right. So that becomes a question of, with all due respect, discretion. You're going to require a homeowner who has essentially a compliant unit but for not being attached to undergo probably $100-plus thousand to build yet another accessory apartment. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think you're suggesting a passage, if I understood correctly.
Well, then, then you're going to have the argument about that it doesn't give the same appearance in violation of the single family. So I don't want to get, even though it's hidden by everybody, to everybody.
But we did ask the person in the red barn to attach it.
I understand your point. I'm not questioning it. I know what you're saying.
And that is an express provision that can be waived. That's the appearance. That's part of the design standards. Yes.
Well, if we force a breezeway or a corridor from the house to the garage, we're also covering more available ground in the town, which is something we're trying to avoid.
We did require that in the instance on eight Coolidge. But where precedent was brought up, we're not held to any precedent of any other thing. Everything is an individual decision based on this property.
No, I understand that.
Or Coolidge property. So we can require that there and require this here, and it does not create a collision, if you would.
No, it's... So different individual positions.
Exactly. We do not create precedence with a decision.
So this would be a perfect example of why the bylaw should say that the board has the right to waive if it can be detached. In this case, it would make all the sense in the world, but you can't do it. If we were to, if the bylaws were to change that this board had the right to approve a detachment for a specific REIT, for some reason that was reasonable, whatever that might be, this would be a perfect case of why that would be a legitimate change, needing a change.
I would agree with you. I mean, are you of the opinion, Paul, that we could issue a waiver for the detached building, or am I reading this in your legal opinion? And I know it's a decision. I do appreciate that.
Correct. And as you know, I try to leave the decisions to you. I don't want to sort of put my thumb on the scale one way or the other. If you're asking me flat out, do I think that if you made the determination that you could grant a waiver, whether that would be subject to being overturned on appeal? I think it would. I think you would be really stretching to determine you can waive it when it's not...
If it clearly said in the design standards, specifically in some form, that you can separate the two, it would be a much easier decision for me.
Right. Yeah, I'm going with the intent of the bylaw, not the specific one.
And I'm not going to disagree with that.
No, I understand everybody's comments. They're all very fair comments.
Well, I think the question to you is still...
Yeah, I know. We keep getting, if someone else has an opinion on where they are with the way this is coming, I'd welcome it. I really don't know what the right answer is here.
Well, I'm not a voting member, but if I can participate in the straw poll, you know, if I would want to...
Just to clarify, you don't know what's going to happen when and if they come back.
Oh, I know. No, I get that.
You could be a voting member, and you should be able to participate in that.
No, what I'm saying is, I would do my best to find a way to let them have an LAA. But like I said, with someone else who's here, we can't design it for you.
I understand. Fair enough. Why don't I do this? Why don't I ask for a continuance of this hearing?
I think that's a good idea. We are going to request a certified plot plan.
Well, I gave you a certified plot plan. Are you looking for architecturals?
No, I'm looking for a certified plot plan, and I apologize. I was told that we did not have a stamped plan of the property.
Oh, I thought I submitted a plot plan. I'm pretty sure it did.
That's just what I was told. I have not seen one, of course.
Yeah, I didn't see one either.
Architectural required.
Okay. Let me find.
We don't even know what we're getting architecturals for yet.
Architectural required for an application.
Doug, I did not receive a certified plot plan.
Yeah, I know that there was one, though.
Is it, do you require an architectural plan for this, Jose? Would one be required?
Through the bylaw.
Per the section of the bylaw, it does require...
So Chapter 195-103, Special Permits, talks about the plant submittals, and then it cross-references Section 195-104, which is the site plan approval, plant submittal requirements. So then, if you go to 195-104, you will see that there is a provision... Hold on a second. Subsection F, waiver of technical compliance. Planning Board, which in this case would be the Board of Appeals, may, upon written request of the applicant, waive any of the technical requirements of Subsection D, which is the plant submittals, where the project involves relatively simple development plans or constitutes a minor site plan. So you do have the discretion to waive certain requirements. The regulations governing variances, special permits, and administrative appeals is a board regulation that was adopted by the board, not by town meeting. You absolutely have the inherent authority to waive strict compliance with that as well.
Have you passed that down to Paul, too, Jose?
If you're, I'm just asking if you're requiring the architecturals or not. I would ask you to waive it as in your discretion to do, regardless of...
You're going to have to file a written request for that.
I'll be happy to file the written request, but I just don't want to raise money.
I don't find them necessary at this point, so if you'd like to file that request...
I will, tomorrow morning.
Jose can review it, and then we'll move ahead.
That was the first thing that came out of your mouth when I applied for my permit.
If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium.
First thing.
Mr. Chairman, this is...
To let you know, first thing, where are the architectural plans?
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman...
So I have to spend $2,000 and go over...
Think this is out of order? I'd like...
I agree.
Okay.
This board is out of order when it comes to me.
I'm here tonight representing Gabriel's. I'm not here to do battle with Attorney Harvey.
Oh, you're doing a good job. You can even submit the required documents.
So I'm addressing the board on the issues that are before the board for this application. I actually don't want to give any credence to anything he says, for obvious reasons. So I just ask if you would agree if I send in a written request with the board be acceptable of not requiring architectural plans for a house that's been in existence for 120-plus years and equivalent of an LAA been in existence for 33 years, right? Giving you hard evidence of what it is.
I think we could consider it.
Okay. I'll ask you to do that. Thank you. And I'll ask for a continuance.
I'll make a motion to continue this to our next scheduled meeting on October 5.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you vote to continue it?
All in favor.
In lieu of your straw poll...
I was just making note of that meeting.
You spent 98 percent of the time talking about one issue. That might give you your answer.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to get it in.
You need to do all in favor. All in favor. A second motion was made.
A motion from Charlie?
I was, yep.
Second? As he comes around, I was just doing my thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Lot to think about.
Excuse me, Doug.
We're going to take a two-minute break.
I thought we were breaking at night, Thursday.
Lot to think about.
Um, excuse me, Doug?
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a two-minute break.
I thought we were breaking at night, Thursday. Perfect.
Rainbow Avenue, Sarah and Gary Brown, they have requested a continuance until October 5th, 2023. I could get a motion to continue. Steve, second?
Second.
Nancy?
For floor... So, I'm sorry, what, this is 11 Rainbow Avenue?
Yes.
Yep.
And they have requested variances. Right, has there been a, an extension of the time for the board to act, 100-day period on the variances?
They, they have considerably, because they were trying to go before the town, they were going to change the, the ruling for the town. This is, this is almost probably a year, I think it's been on...
Start in December.
Okay, so, so you've got the necessary extensions and...
Yeah, Mr. Howes asked for the continuance, he's aware of it, yep.
I will second.
Our next hearing is 15 Chatham Road, Scott Durkin.
We have to vote to continue.
Yep, can I get any on...
So who made the motion?
I second.
And Nancy, okay.
All in favor?
Yep, aye.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, my name's Ed Reeves, I'm representing Scott Durkin, the owner, 15 Chatham Road. I was here two months ago, and I was trying to get the setbacks. Sorry, I've been a long night, I've been watching all this.
You want me to ball?
Yeah. May 1st was the special date, 1961. And I found the original building permit from Robert Holmes, who was the builder in that neighborhood. And he pulled the permit in October 18th, 1960. So it, it fell under the original setbacks before 61, which the side setbacks were 17 feet. So I was looking for the 20%, which would give me a setback of 13.6 feet. I sent a plot plan, certified plot plan, stating that I'll set it back 14 feet. Gives me a little room to play, so I'm going to make a jog in the foundation and the addition, with no cantilever. Okay, and I'll reduce it...
Am I wrong, Jose, that a cantilever would be acceptable? It's the foundation that has to be located at the point? I think you, are you talking about a second floor cantilever?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, that would be okay, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it, just for your, your knowledge, I mean, yeah, I don't know, I think you can, cantilever.
I wasn't sure about that.
Are we talking the jog?
Just a jog on the first floor.
It's not much ground you're carrying. Is that, is that necessary?
It's only necessary if you want to have the additional space on the second floor.
No, see, originally back...
It's not necessary to have the cantilever, no.
Originally back in 2017, you approved this with the original setbacks. My customer didn't have it brought to the Registry of Deeds and recorded, okay? And that was his mistake, because it would have been a lot easier. I did have that recorded after our last meeting. So I'm just looking for the...
But, but, it's, uh, I mean, if you, if you can get to the point where you're looking for a special permit now, it's going to be much less onerous to get through this. So that sounds like it would be the case. 17-foot setback, and then 20% reduction on that.
Yep.
If you didn't exceed that, then, then we can, we can move ahead.
But that back, because the plot's sort of ice cream cone shaped, the front of the, I guess the garage or...
Yep.
Would be within that, that 20%. The back is, I mean, if you look at the, it's eight inches, so I mean, that's the little jog that I'm, that I'm talking about.
Been zooming.
Right, I don't know if you plan to jog the wall, or, or remove the entire thing in that eight inches, and just make it, make it smaller, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's going to be a garage under, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
You can do, without problem, a 22-foot garage. I don't know if that appeals to you, but you wouldn't need to even go as small as that.
Yeah, I, I really just want to keep the garage the same size, and just do the jog in the back of the building.
If, if we can give you a special permit, it's going to work well.
Yep.
If we have to go to a variance, and we don't really have an option with the setbacks on that...
Yep.
It's going to be a problem.
Okay.
It's my opinion, we're bored of eight, obviously, but it would be a challenge.
Right, so the special permit would be the way to go.
Right, we don't have, uh, the, the hardship is not required. The tenants of a variance, I don't think you would meet, I don't know the reason. I, I guess we could consider an odd lot shape, but it's a, it's an uphill battle, certainly. So why don't we pull up the plan to see what he is proposing?
Yep, this is the revised plan.
This is what we got.
Mm-hmm.
Paul, if you go back to the original, uh, layout that I originally submitted...
This is the original.
See if he's saying with the cantilever, it wouldn't affect...
So the original special permit, which was in era... Was 12.6 in the back, 17.2. And now we're, I don't know if it's the rear corner, it says 14, is, is that to the very rear corner there, that 14?
Yep.
Yeah, 20% of 17, right?
Right, 13.6.
Oh, you're going to make it the construction.
Yes. It gives me a little play.
13.6, and they have 14.
Right. So we'll have to shrink.
12.
Is it, is it .6 or, or 15-foot 6?
13.6.
So we'd have to shrink five inches?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to suggest that you submit a, a plan that locates it within the special permit requirements.
Yep.
Um, and I think that we can move ahead and approve this...
Yep.
Should that be the rule of the board, which I'm comfortable with.
Yep.
Um, and it just is a special permit, and then you'll be issued it, and it'll be, you know, pegged where it goes, so it does meet the requirements.
Sure. I did explain that to Scott, he, he wanted to voice his opinion, because he really wanted it to, he wanted that little...
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just aesthetic, just, I didn't want that little jog, but if it's going to expedite things, so...
Move the jog and just make the entire garage...
22. Oh, yeah.
22.8?
No, that's...
23.8, excuse me.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a whole lot to give up, if, uh...
Yeah.
If you really want to get carried away, take the, you know, the foundation out of the interior of the garage there, and you'll have that space, you know what I mean? Just make it, put a ledge in it, yep. Trying to make it work, I know it's a difficult thing to, to let that slide. If I understood correctly, though, you would have also had to have started doing something for it to, to maintain. Is, is that right, Paul? You would have had to actually begin work, as well as have...
Prior to the permit lapsing, yes.
Yeah, you would have, you would have begun something, you know, whether the foundation was in or something.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't have helped you that much to, to record it, it was a portion of what's needed.
Yep.
Are there any questions of the board? What we would, what we would be approving is a special permit, with a 17-foot setback and a 20% allowance for a special permit.
That's what this is for.
Because it was built in 1960. Way close on the time, everywhere you look on this thing, huh?
Oh, yeah. That was the, I went through the folder, that was the last paper in the folder I flipped over.
Really?
I was like, wow.
We have letters?
Give me just a second.
It seems disarrayed.
I am, I apologize.
Well, did we read them last time? I don't know.
That's right, the letters were from last time, so no new letters, because you read the letters in July, thank you.
Uh, we are still open to the public, I'm going to open this up for comment. In favor or against? Seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Peter, second?
Second.
Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to take this up as a special permit.
I seconded, Peter was the...
Anybody feel like making a motion?
What we're talking about, we're on 15 Chatham Road, right?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes. I'll make the motion to...
Yeah, hold on just a second before voting. Oh, July, who was here in July?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so Brian, Charlie, Nancy, Stephen, Jamie, and Peter.
I don't think Jamie was here.
For July?
Yeah, I don't think so.
We didn't have a meeting in July.
She's not here now anyways.
You didn't have a meeting in July, you skipped on, so Peter can vote, he was...
Yeah, I was here.
So, yeah, so Peter votes.
Yeah.
Okay, we have five with Peter votes.
I am by Peter. Make a motion to approve the special permit under 195 dash 61 for 15 Chatham Road, for the construction of the LAA, um, with respect to all letters that have been previously read into the record. I second. All right, second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
All right.
Awesome.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
We're getting close.
I just have one more, etc.
Application is 9496 Princeton Street. Owner Brian Welbrenner, DBA Princeton McMahon LLC. And I read this so we could just...
Okay, good evening, I'm Greg Halladina for Princeton McMahon LLC, and I'm here with Brian Welbrenner, the manager. He's the owner of the property at 9496 Princeton Street. It's a three-family dwelling, has eight parking spaces, it was built in 1899. He purchased it earlier this year. We're here in the continuance of an administrative appeal of the building commissioner's determination that this was not a legal three-family, but rather a two-family. Thus, permits were denied for Brian to repair and renovate three units that had sustained some water damage. Mr. Welbrenner, as I told you, he's 60 years old, he grew up in Chalmersford, he's been a licensed construction supervisor for 36 years. He had recollections of the, he lived two blocks away from this when he was growing up. His recollections as a kid growing up was that these were all three, four-family, multifamily homes. Uh, the property had been previously owned by the Golubisky family. They had owned it for generations, back to 1938. And Brian had told you, I think at the last meeting, that he recalled doing work on other property that Golubisky owned. And they were talking about the old neighborhood, and Brian asked if you're ever going to sell the property, you know, think of me and let me know. And sure enough, years later, Mr. Golubisky was ready to sell the property, and he sold it to Brian. And at the time of the sale, he told Mr. Welbrenner that, you know, there had been long-term tenants on the third floor, it was a three-family. The issue was, one, was this a three-family when it was built in 1899? And then second, has it been used, or not been, has the three-family use not been discontinued for more than two years since then? With respect to the issue of the construction of the properties of the three-family, we submitted, and I believe it's in, it's up on the computer, there was a letter from the architect, stamped and certified, the architect made observations about the site, and was of the firm belief that the third-floor apartment was constructed at the same time as the first and the second floor. And that was based on a conclusion of several things. One, the same type of lath plaster was being used on all three floors, that was common in the late 19th century. There was knob and tube wiring in the third-floor apartment, consistent with what was in the first and the second floor. There were remnants of gas lighting in the third floor, suggesting it was originally designed and built during that area. And each of the three-floor units had two sets of original stairs servicing the unit. And it was the engineer's opinion on their stamped letter that this was built as a three-family. So that leaves us with the other question, was it continuously used as a three-family? And last time we were before the board, it was continued, so we could do a little further research on that subject. You know, in addition to the anecdotal evidence that Mr. Welbrenner provided, and his memory as a, growing up in the neighborhood, Brian did some research, and the voter lists were scoured. And lo and behold, over the past 50 years, we found several instances of three families occupying that property. And I don't, Becky, I think I submitted that to you, I don't know if it's up on the...
It is.
It is, let me just pull it up for you.
So in, in 1976, the voters' list showed that at 96, there were two members of the Golubisky family at, at number 96. But then also at 96, which would have been the third floor, there was the Muskets, James and Mary, suggesting there were three families there in 76. Later in 78, same thing. 96 had the Golubiskys on the first two units, and then the third floor was the same people, the Muskets, that was in 78. And then in 1996, there was a occupant of the third floor, also at 96, called Gagnon, not related to the family, apparently a third, um, third family occupying it as the third unit. 2000, we found another occupant on the third floor at 96, Joan Lamberell. In 2003, that same occupant was still listed as at 96, the third-floor apartment. Again, in 2006, that same tenant on the third floor showed up on the list of voters. And then in 2007, as well, we found that same tenant occupying the third floor. So we have over 50 years, several instances of tenants occupying the third floor.
What is the basis for knowing that they're on the third floor?
Because the Golubiskys, there were two couples named Golubisky on the second, on, on 94, and then a Golubisky couple on 96, and then also on 96 was that third tenant. On each of these lists that I saw...
Right above each one is 94.
For whatever reason, 94 was the first floor, 96 was the second floor, and the third floor is also called 96. But what you had is Golubisky, the owner, at 96, and then you also had at 96, and the several instances we found over the last 40 or 50 years, someone else at 96, not a family member, a different name. at ninety-six, not a family member, a different name. You know, at this point, I think it's pretty clear that there was use over the last three years document, over the last fifty years documented, as it was three separate families. Obviously, not everybody registers the vote, not everyone's on the voters' list, but Brian did the research at the library, and this is what he was able to find, and he also was unable to get any answers from the post office, you know, they weren't gonna share any information on that. I think, based on what I saw tonight, I mean, you've had, I think of six, I counted, limited accessory-use apartments, there's obviously a desperate need for small, affordable units in town, and in this case, you have a structure that is already existing for a hundred and twenty-five years, it has a long history of three-family use, and I think it's consistent with all the evidence that this has continuously been used as a three-family. The record is devoid of any interruption or change of use. And for those reasons, we would respectfully ask that, you know, a finding be made that this is a grandfathered use, three families.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, some refreshing from our last meeting?
If I remember correctly, he had to, he had to show us that it was a three-family from nineteen thirty-eight, correct?
Yes.
I don't know what to say about that, I think that's an impossible task.
That's impossible? Okay.
I, I don't know how you could possibly do that, I don't know how you would, but I mean.
I think our goal was to try to get as much evidence as we could that there were three families in there, as we said at the last meeting, we don't have rent rolls, we don't have evidence of everyone was living there permanently, and a lot of people don't register.
Actually, nineteen thirty-eight, I think you're talking about the advent of zoning.
Right.
So that would only apply to the statute that makes it a two-family by right.
No, so the idea is that they're trying to establish that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, so you need to take a look at the time where the zoning changed to prohibit the use and determine whether or not that the use was in existence lawfully prior to the adoption of that zoning by law. So nineteen thirty-eight is the operative time that we need to be looking at, we need, what you need to determine is that the use existed in nineteen thirty-eight and it was lawfully commenced.
Right.
And I guess my position would have been it existed in eighteen ninety-nine and was built based upon the architect's certification, and with respect to use, I mean, I think we've demonstrated, you know, a long history of use, I think it would be an impossibility to show every single tenant who was there every year for the last hundred and twenty-five years, or at least from nineteen thirty-eight. What we've attempted to do is get as much evidence as we could and provide a level of comfort for the board in making the finding that we never, this, the three-family use was never abandoned, it appears to have been ongoing, it doesn't make sense that someone would use it as a three-family, then stop for two years, and then use it again, start again. Every time, everything we could find showed three families over the years. And for that reason, we were hopeful that this would give you the comfort level in making a finding that it's been done continuously. I think it would be an impossibility, admittedly, to show without a doubt every single tenant who's lived there for all the years since nineteen thirty-eight, that just couldn't be done.
I couldn't imagine how you could do it, I really don't envy the task.
We just tried, we have anecdotal evidence, we have some documentation of voter lists.
I think it's powerful to me that the architect was willing to say, this was built at one place and time, and I feel with my experience, I could do that, I could tell you when something was constructed, or whether it was constructed at the same time. So when you built a three-family, to me, that, that creates a three-family, when fifty years later, nineteen thirty-eight came around and said any building that was older than that automatically had the right to be a two-family, but a building that was already a three-family wouldn't, wouldn't benefit from that right at all, they'd be losing. So I think it would've been a three-family in perpetuity. If it was abandoned and someone had done something with it, I guess you'd, you'd have some evidence to that.
Yeah, well, we got into that discussion before, I mean, if there was a use, there was a store, for example, a commercial use, and, you know, the store closed, well then, sure, you've discontinued the use, but in this, there was, there's no evidence that it was anything other than three units, and, you know, we found several instances of three different people unrelated, apparently occupying it, three separate units. Even if it was vacant, if it, you know, if a tenant left and took a couple of months, I mean, that's inevitable, that's, there's nothing that indicates to us that there was any discontinuance or abandonment of that three-family use.
So in two thousand, it has all, it has four Golubiskys, sorry, I missed it, but all at ninety-four, and then one person with a different last name at ninety-six, so your representation is that two were in unit one and the other two were in unit two, even though they all are, I guess, family members?
That would be our take on it, yes.
Actually, I actually called the, called the original homeowner and went through the list of whoever achieved someone told me who was who at the time, so.
Okay.
Over the years, you know, their daughters and their husbands have lived there, you know, so it's just, you know, they've had third and fourth tenants all the time, so. And like I said before, all these houses are in that area, because they grew up in that area, they were all built for mill housing at the time, and so there's, you know, I grew up, where I grew up on Gay Street, there was four families, there's, I believe, six four families in that area that are in the same zone that have been there forever, and they were all built, you know, for mill housing to.
I just think it would be a shame if, you know, we've watched six people come in and ask for accessory units, here you have three units in a building that have been existing for years, that's really all we're asking for, is just to continue what's been going on since eighteen ninety-nine, as far as we can tell.
But in nineteen seventy-six, you have two ninety-fours, Golubisky, two ninety-six, Golubisky, and then two ninety-six for Musket. But then we get to, I mean, nineteen seventy-eight is the same, you got ninety-fours, a ninety-six, Golubisky, and a ninety-six, Musket.
Correct.
But in nineteen ninety-six, all the Golubiskys are now ninety-four, and there's one ninety-six that's a different last name.
That was Gagnon.
Yeah.
In ninety, in ninety-six.
So that could show that all the Golubiskys went to the first floor, and then Gagnon was the second-floor tenant, because you don't have two people, two different last names showing up on a ninety-six anymore.
Yeah, so when you, when you look at this one right here, that Cynthia Golubisky was the mother of William and Geraint, Jill was their daughter, you know, so they, the mother lived on the first floor, the other Golubisky lived on the second floor, and the Gagnon lived on the third floor.
But why did it change, why, why are they no longer listing as ninety-sixes for the Golubiskys?
I think it had to do with, you know, there was only two mailboxes, but, you know, if, if it was all Golubiskys, they could keep it all together and split the mail up rather than put it to somebody else, so.
But it's a distinct change from seventy-six and seventy-eight, where they showed themselves as being ninety-four and ninety-six, and then in ninety-six, they're, nineteen ninety-six, they're all ninety-fours, two thousand, I think they're all ninety-fours, two thousand and three, they're all ninety-fours, two thousand and six.
Yeah, 'cause the stairway to ninety-six is to the second floor and the third floor, so I believe that's probably, you know, they, they put it all in one, so they're all, the whole family was getting the mail, and then the third-floor tenant was getting a separate, separate mail.
And when you move to two thousand and six, it looks like it's Golubisky, two of them, and then it's DePritzio, and then it's for ninety-six, the Golubiskys were ninety-four, and then another ninety-six was Joan Lamro, who was the tenant previous time, in two thousand and three. And that would suggest to me that she was always on the third floor.
Well, that she's moved in with Frederick. In two thousand and seven, it really changes.
No apartments on any of them.
Yeah, I don't, two thousand and six and seven is just confusing, it's, Golubiskys have now split, but then Rathburn.
It looks like Jill married Josh, just now she had that last name in ninety-four.
Oh, she got married.
She got married to the guy Josh, they share the same last name. But Josh moved in with Jill. Right? And then you've got two people in ninety-six.
Yeah, it looked like DePritzio and Golubisky were ninety-six, then the third, and the ninety-six was Lamro, which we believe was the third floor.
I just feel like we're making assumptions as to who was on second and who was on third, since they both share the same number, and.
There's no unit numbers.
Yeah.
But if you had a three-family, why would you convert to a two?
If you wanted more space for your family, so if you have a big family and you wanna use floors one and two for yours, and then write number three, then it's a two. That's my concern looking at these records, is they, there might be that, where they're separate living, but they also might not be, so I don't know.
Yeah, you make a point that I hadn't considered.
I think if you look at the architectural plan, you know, the clearly shows that they're separated by different stairways and stuff, so.
That's the architect's conclusion, too, they were always separated.
Right, second and third were not joined in any, at any time that we know of.
No evidence of that, no.
Enough deliberating, further questions?
Press Cafe is closed, I'm here all night.
Yeah, doesn't matter anymore, you missed it.
Uh-oh, it's hungry.
Ice will hold me over.
Oh, I have a comment, I, okay. It seems to me, but I could be wrong, it seems to me that this was built as a two-family, and the reason I say that is because back around nineteen hundreds, they had two staircases in a lot of houses, and obviously, if that was a two-family, they had the two staircases going up to the bedroom on the third floor, so I, I, I just think it was just built as a two-family.
But why then would each unit have separate entrances, yeah?
Separate egress.
There's three kitchens in it, I forget.
Yes.
But that's just what I think, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't there.
Well, the architect's letter was pretty definitive that it was built as a three-family.
The, the structure was designed as a three-family, that's what I felt.
Well, we don't know the design, it was built as a three-family.
But you couldn't leave the second floor and go to the third floor without entering an entryway?
Correct.
Leaving an entryway and entering an entryway.
That supports the idea of a third family.
I think it was the stairs going up, you know, were consistent with the whole time frame, they were done all at the same time, so you go out of the second floor to go up to the third, you're going through a stairwell that was consistent with everything else that was built.
But it was an open stairwell, like a public stairwell.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It had, it allowed egress to the exterior and the third floor.
Yeah, it, it's not a stairwell with inside the apartment, you go outside to go up, absolutely, yeah.
I, I can't, I, you know, I, yeah.
Okay, I thought these were inside, okay.
The stairway proper is inside, but they're not inside the unit, it's like a stairway.
Yeah, there's a common stairwell going up, and there's a door going into one unit and the second floor and the third floor, the first and the second are the same thing, you can go upstairs, go in one unit, go up the stairs into the other unit.
So you don't have to go through the second unit to get outside, you go directly from the third unit of the building.
Absolutely, yes.
And that was covered in July. I mean, anecdotally, I owned a six-family apartment when I lived in Maynard, you know, and each, each apartment, you know, it was one, you know, two on each floor, and each apartment had its own.
You got to the landing, you entered that unit, you could go up the stairs and get to the next unit.
And I got greedy, I turned it into a single family and then lost all that rental. So I, you know, without having been to prison, but I, I looked at all the documentation listed of the use, I bet you I could draw you a picture of that building without even having been there. And, you know, we're not in the genealogical business to decide who lived where and when, we can't get all that, I'm surprised you came up with as much information as you got.
Brian did the research, and I can't take the credit for that, yeah.
And you said the, the post office wouldn't share any information with you?
They don't share any kind of private information because.
Well, they're not supposed to, would've been surprised if they gave you any. What, I mean, what else can we expect of this, this man to?
I mean, I think you have to make a decision whether you think, when this was built, was it a three-family, and if it's still a three-family, is the end determination, of course, but, you know, to say that he needs to prove that every two years this was not unoccupied is an impossible task, I believe.
My mind's made up, but I can't vote with you guys, so all I do is talk.
No, I, I think it's gonna be, you know, we're, we're voting to overturn the decision of the bill inspector, it's not a special permit, it's not a variance, and it's not a supermajority, is that correct? It is a supermajority, so I mean, four out of five.
I mean, the point I made is I, I think it's a reasonable inference that if you have three families, it's constructed as a three-family in eighteen ninety-nine, you're gonna keep it as a three-family, I don't think that's an unreasonable inference to make, if it's a three-family now, when it was eighteen ninety-nine, and you found evidence over fifty years of what appears to be three separate occupancies.
The argument is compelling to me.
I, you know, I hope that gives you a comfort level to at least infer that, yet it probably has been continued, I, I would submit that's enough, and it would be an impossibility to do what.
The fact that it's not changed is, is what I hang my hat on, that it still would function as a three-family without change.
Oh, it does, yes, three kitchens.
Put three doors over here, and then it'll be a three-family again, that's, that's not the case here, it's a three-family by design now, and I think having the architect say that, you know, this was all built in the same era is, is strong argument.
It just would be a shame to lose in a unit of affordable housing, why something that's been there for a hundred and twenty-five years go from three to two? I just sat all night and watched six people ask for a accessory unit, I mean, you have it here, and there's no changes at all, it's gonna be what, what's been in existence for a century and a quarter.
So I don't think we're gonna get any new information sitting here.
No one's in the audience.
Yeah, there's no audience, they're gone, so I guess I entertain a motion to. You scared everybody away, don't have to do that anymore.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
Second by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion. Suggesting the affirmative is typical, but. Anybody?
I think he's.
Steve's gonna make one.
A motion to.
Would be to overturn the building commissioner's determination.
I'll make a motion to overturn the building commissioner's determination that the structure at ninety-four dash ninety-six Princeton Street is not a three-family dwelling and any other relief deemed necessary with respect to any letter that have been read into the record.
I'll second. Second by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Charlie seconded, and now the vote.
I do not have a. All opposed?
Okay, so in favor was, sorry, I need to write this down.
Pete, Charlie, and Brian.
Brian, Pete, Charlie, okay.
Close was the left side.
Okay, I didn't see your hands.
They did say all opposed, and nobody raised their hand, so.
All opposed.
Two, okay.
The motion does not carry. You gotta decide what's right for you, that's.
No, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Because I, I switched.
I can't see how it couldn't change, but. Take care, thank you for your time.
Should we do the, because, um. Should we do the, because I wasn't here for all of these minutes.
I have some changes to July.
I wasn't here for all of them. I don't know what Harvey said. I shouldn't be approving them.
Okay.
All I want.
Okay.
My vote is to table the minutes. Oh, actually, has anyone read them, though, if we could vote on the minutes, because we haven't posted any? If, if you've read them, but you tabled them last time. Changes to July 6th that I haven't given to you. Because we've been getting pressure on not posting minutes.
Becky, I've read them, but I only can read half, because all of them...
So you approve what you've read?
They've been very lengthy.
Yeah, I approve what I read, but I don't know what Harvey...
Are we gonna do it in mass, or you wanna do all of them individual?
But if, if you all vote, I mean, that's your vote, that's your prerogative, and that's okay.
I think we've been...
That is your prerogative, you are the board, and I am not a voting member, so... I, well, I am gonna send you changes for July 6th, so I would request that that be tabled, at least.
I guess, how about May 4th? Can we get through that one?
Before you guys resolve here tonight, just one thing, I wanna double check what the quantum of vote is for overturning a decision of the voting commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Is it a super majority required?
Right. I wanna double check.
Was it the impossibility of determining the, uh, the three family that...
For me, so the applicant has the burden to show that, to overcome it. So basically, they already had the water for two, like, everything was set for two with the town, and then did not have...
Did they have two water services?
Yeah. So I didn't have enough evidence to overcome that burden in my mind.
I, I don't think I understood that, so that's, that's an interesting point.
Okay, Brian, if we were to vote again, I might, I probably switched to Nancy, so.
It's Nancy. It's incisive. No, no, Charlie.
I thought it was one electrical meter. And I don't know if it was...
Nancy, would you, would you take a moment just to say that again? I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it sounded very interesting, and I've clocked the last few minutes, few words.
So what I said was, let me see where I found it. It was, they have two electrical meters, it was assessed as a two family, and only one water meter. So based on that, the applicant has the burden to overcome that, to prove that it's a three family for, and it's been consistent, and I did not have enough evidence to find that they overcame that burden in my mind.
Well, I respect your decision, 100%. I just was curious as to...
Well, especially because it was the right decision, so it made it easier for them to... I'll never move to the left.
Well, it had, it had a single water meter, but two electric meters.
Single water meter, two electric.
And if you had said a two...
Assessed as a two family.
When it was built, was there electric in homes?
Yeah, it was...
Originally, it was gas. It probably didn't have electric star.
The concurring vote of all members of the Board of Appeals, consisting of three members, and a concurring vote of four members of a board consisting of five members, shall be necessary to reverse any order or decision of any administrative official into this chapter.
Super majority.
Just wanted to double check this.
You could have brought that up during the discussion.
Oh, sorry, it was discussed at the July...
I do recall that, but I, I recall that it was discussed now that you mentioned
it.
And when, when I draft up the decision, it, it is important that everyone voice, especially if you're voting no, reasons why, because then that's listed in the decision, right, Paul? That gives it more meat in terms of if there was an appeal, to understand why, so, but you did voice that at the last meeting.
Did Jose say what he based his?
And that's what he was gonna go get, like...
He based it, um, I, I, I'm gonna think, looking back at that, he was, he was similar with the, the meters and the assess.
And the assessors. So he's been a two family, so.
I owned it, and they said it's a two family, and it wasn't.
Right.
I might not disagree with them for a tax basis, but I'm not suggesting that, I just say that it's not, it's not an impossibility.
But I'll just throw this out here, too, having grown up in Lowell, I can tell you, a lot of the duplexes where it's one apartment on the first floor and the second apartment is on the second floor, oftentimes that second apartment has a third storing as additional living and bedroom space. And sometimes, just the way, I don't know, just, I know the house I grew up in...
I think that was a trigger of the sprinklers, too, though.
The house I grew up in.
Once you go to a three family in Lowell, you gotta sprinkle it. So you wanted to get...
Yes, so that's another issue why people avoid it.
You'd have been better to make it a two family than, than have a three family possibly convert to a two family, and you don't have to sprinkle the building.
That's why oftentimes people don't register that it's a third apartment, to get away from sprinklers.
I grew up in Somerville, uh, in a two family. I was Italian, all the relatives that lived around me, and over their occupancy, sometimes they used it as a one family, sometimes they used it as a two family. It was whatever the needs were at the ti, time.
Just adjustable.
Yeah.
Somebody got married, they wanted some privacy, well, we'll put a door here.
Put a door and a lock on it. Right?
Well, I think we gave him a fair shake, that's what I think, so.
We have to close this.
And at the end of the day, he's gonna have two apartments that are of a larger square footage than three, of the same square footage, so it doesn't end up being an economic hardship. Thank you, Ms. Arity, for your time, your counsel.
Good night.
Do we have to close this?
She wants, well, I don't know. Is anyone gonna do the minutes?
It was May 4th we were gonna do.
Yeah, May 4th. I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 4th.
Second. Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
And Nancy's gonna get changes for July's meeting, so we'll wait on those. Now, we're only a month behind, or two, depending on the vacation.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Okay.
I have a question, do you guys have a question?